Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is March 28th. We are here for a board workshop. We will have Ms. Morgan will be joining us via the phone. Ms. Morgan, are you there?
I am. Hello, everybody. Hope you had a great.
I am. Also, Ms. Gittens will be, from my understanding, joining us. She's on her way. She'll be joining us by phone and then coming in. Ms. Gittens, are you with us?
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, so today on our, the purpose of the workshop is the gender review of March 29th, which we'll go over those in a minute with Dr. Savage. We have the board, I'm sorry, recommendation of HR and beyond, discussing the future whistleblower complaints. And then we have the board attorney evaluation, followed with good of the order. So if we could begin, Dr. Savage, it's your turn.
Yes, Madam Chair. So without further ado, we'll jump right into the items. The first item was H3, the approval of the fiscal year '22 Get There Faster Career Dual Enrollment Expansion Grant in ESER II. Question was, please explain attachment page four, items five, six, and seven. Basically describe how we can sustain the grant amount after ESER is finished. And we have Rita Davis here today. Rita?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We plan to sustain the program using the dollars funded from industry certifications earned through the three programs and also any funds earned in part through FTE from them being dual enrollment. So two parts.
Ms. Gittens, and thank you, because that was one of my questions. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gittens, did you have anything, any follow-up on that one?
I was just interested in knowing why and how it would sustain grants. And actually, I'm interested in knowing how many of the things they do inspire these to continue.
We're having a very difficult time hearing what you're saying, the questions that you're asking. And I know you said something about sustaining, which Ms. Davis had just discussed or mentioned how that's going to take place. Did you hear what she said?
Yeah, that's all right. I'm here. I asked you to go on to any other questions.
Ms. Gittens, you are, okay, Ms. Gittens, you are the only one who has questions written down. So that will be very difficult for us to do that.
All right. Okay.
So we're gonna go, we're gonna go ahead and move on. But I do have, please, Ms. Davis, I do have a question. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for the partnerships and getting with the local businesses. That's really important, so I really appreciate that. And then how, and then I read how the kids were selected, or the students were selected. But we will make sure that, because that was another thing about the recruitment of the program. Then I did see further down how it said you're going to go to Title I schools. But how are we going to make sure that all these kids are getting the information to make sure that we do open it up for all of our children?
Correct. So the, we've been working with the principals. We, each year around this time, we have individual meetings with the high schools to discuss their career and tech ed plans for the upcoming school year as we write the grant applications that are due very soon. And with anticipation of funding for this particular grant, we spoke with them about these three different programs, and then talked to them about the interest, not only from the students, but teachers, and which schools would benefit most from an accessibility standpoint, and also, you know, higher need schools like you just spoke to. And then once we draw down, or have the budget approved, which DOE replied back last week that they're in the final stages of approving our budget narrative, then we can begin making these purchases. Part of the funding will go to field trips and exploration for the students to learn the benefits of the program, speak to people that are already doing those jobs. And that's how we initially hope to gain interest beyond the schools, you know, welcoming the implementation of the programs.
So it's kind of like what you do with the builders.
Correct. Only these will be, instead of like a Build My Future Expo, I think is what you're referring to, Ms. Jordan. Like, City of Fort Myers is very eager to have students participate in their water treatment program. And so before an MOU is even crafted, they're looking at field trips, just to gain awareness and expose students to the potential, and then get them excited, and then they would have the program to come back to work with. Aerospace Technologies has been in implementation since the beginning of Benita Springs High School. And so that will just allow us to expand that program. And then we've also expanding it to Island Coast High School. So that has already been a successful program. The water treatment will be new. And then the airframe mechanics, that's been a local ask for several years. And we talked about how high the cost is to implement that program. So we formed a partnership with Charlotte County Schools, which is very innovative. So they've done the heavy financial lifting and implementation, and then we will, it'll be mutually beneficial, because they'll have dual enrollment support from us financially through this grant. And then our students will get the education through the equipment and materials that they offer.
Thank you. And just one more quick thing. And I know when people look at it, could you please explain CAPE, it's not Cape Carl, CAPE funding?
Correct.
To sustain the program?
Yes, I'm happy to explain. So CAPE Act stands for the Career and Professional Education Act. And this was formed several years ago. And it allows Florida to give students, schools, and teachers funds based on the industry certs that they pass. So those exams, everywhere from welding to our Adobe certs to certified nursing assistants. So it's a high value for, obviously, students to achieve these industry certs for their workforce endeavors or their post-secondary endeavors. But it also benefits our district, because it allows us to reinvest money into programs for new implementation and also for sustainability.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I just have somebody say, why is CAPE doing this? I'm like, geez, that's why I asked that.
Yes, excellent, yes.
Thank you for that. Ms. Gittens, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I'm confused.
Okay, right now, we're on Ms. Davis.
Which, we have two here.
If that's a correction, that one pager's a correction or something.
On this?
It's on the first, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Little difficulties this morning. I just, and I did hear you. The connection, though, is really, really bad on by phone.
That's why I wanted to make sure that you understood.
It's really bad by phone. You can hardly hear anything. And thank you for answering that. And like I said, my main question was, when we have grants, do we often just continue on? What's the determination to say, you know, this is a really good program? How do we decide that we're going to go ahead and we're going to take the money out of district funds?
So that's an excellent question. Over the last several years, I'll be in this role for seven years in June. We traditionally do not receive these types of grants. So ESER has been a tremendous infusion of cash into our programs, unexpected, and as we know, it will not be ongoing, such as our Perkins grant and the CAPE funds that we were just talking about. So this is a new wonderful problem to have, and that has been a number one consideration. If it involves new positions or new programs, the first question before we even write the application is, you know, how will we sustain it beyond the money that we draw down? And so we look at ways, we were actually, Mary Graham on CTE was working very hard to, she worked to get Aerospace Technologies going at the two schools, Benita and Island Coast. But she was brokering these articulation agreements between University of Florida and Gateway College for water treatment, and then also airframe mechanics with Charlotte Technical College before this grant opportunity even came into play. We can use Perkins funds if we weren't able to sustain these with CAPE dollars, but we'd really like to use CAPE funds first, because that's showing that our students are achieving the industry certifications. So to answer your question, we believe we have it covered for sustainability. This is not normal for us to receive this type of infusion of funds, and we believe we have a plan beyond the spend down.
To do it. Now, the industry certification funds that we get, I know there's a certain amount that goes to the individual school, and is there a separate amount then that goes to the district?
Correct. So by statute, 80% has to go back to the actual program that generated the funds, not just the school, but the program. So if your welding program is leading the charge in earning industry certs, then 80% need to go back to expand that program. 20% stays at the district office level, and that's where CTE uses those funds to implement new programs. So if we did not have this grant from ESER, we may request that some of that 20% be used to implement these programs. And we go through a budgeting request process every year, like the department, so it's not a guaranteed amount. And then we, meaning me, justify what we will use the funds for. Another portion of that 20% goes to support digital tool certificates, which are our junior certifications at the middle school level, because we see the value in CTE at the middle school level. And so we use district-level CAPE funds to help implement and support those programs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does that cover it?
It does. And if not, I know where you are.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. And I just want, as a reminder as well, we will try to, please try to stay within our four-minute allotment. I will let you know, I have a timer on the screen, so I will let you know when our time is coming to an end, so that way we can keep everything moving. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Item H5, approval of the Title I Part D Amendment Number One. The question was, please explain the salary supplement decrease. And our response today is from Ms. Kennedy.
Good afternoon. There was a decrease, because first, we needed to cover the entire cost of an individual that's in that grant. When we put together grant and you put a person in there, you're estimating how much the salary and benefits are. So there was a $5,000 change that needed to be made. But the actual decrease in supplement also came about, because we had used supplements to pay for credit recovery at the high schools during the summer with this DJJ fund, and they have said it's no longer allowed.
Ms. Gittens, did you have any other questions with that?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, did you have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item H6, approval of the CRRSASER II Technology Assistance Amendment One Grant. The question was, please update the board on the hotspot status and distribution process and data regarding distribution by zone. Again, we're joined by Ms. Kennedy with potentially additional information from Mr. Alton if needed.
So the amendment was to cover additional hotspots, because that allocation was specific to technology, and we did not use the RightScore software program, so we had additional funds to cover hotspots. As far as how the, I think, the question about distribution, the individuals check out devices at their schools, and there was recently a redistribution to the schools. And the, I was given the quantities, because I know you asked by zone, the actual.
You can give it to me later if you want.
Okay. I mean, it's, I have it right here. The quantities by zone was 1,021 by East Zone, South Zone was 939, Southeast is 193, and West was 609.
Okay. And the reason I asked it, when we were going through the height of COVID, and there was the digital divide question about students being able to have accessibility, and I was wondering, were we doing the same type of, you know, distribution? So if anyone just needs one, the student just goes and asks?
My understanding is there was recently a redistribution, but it is by need. And so if they ask, they will send out more to the schools.
And they have to return them?
That's a question for someone else.
Okay. We'll cover that later. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item H8, approval of the agreement with Dreamtime Entertainment Incorporated. The question was, please briefly explain this project, purpose, and funding source. And we are joined by Lori Brooks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the purpose of this contract with Dreamtime Entertainment is to actually create the video lessons that our own mental health team members have written the curriculum for under the three state Board of Education rules for required health instruction. As you may recall, in 2019, those three state Board of Ed rules went into effect for instruction under substance use and abuse prevention, human trafficking, or child trafficking prevention, and mental and emotional wellness. And so these are all required health instruction topics that the State Board of Education determined that if students were not receiving health class every year in grades K through 12, this instruction on these specific topics needed to be scaffolded instruction that occurred annually. And so we were previously renting curriculum through videos. It was really a good just-in-time product, but our intent has always been to create our own curriculum for our students, using our own health professionals and mental health professionals. And so now we need to take that curriculum and turn that into video instruction for those Wellness Wednesday lessons.
And is this some, and is this something that can possibly be shared with other districts?
Yes. Our districts, that's a great question, because we actually have been viewing videos that other districts have created. And our intent, every Wellness Wednesday, actually, with our own video instruction, is to post those videos with an accompanying parent guide, so that our parents can view what the students are viewing, and actually have their own parental discussions with their children to support that learning. So it'll be live on our site every month, similar to Duval County and many other districts that have created their own. And then also, at our state meetings, we're very happy to share, and anyone can go to our public website to look at that.
Madam Chair, if I may, my next question had to do, and that's in your area too, but it basically had to do with, with the increased awareness of parent involvement, and especially these sensitive items such as mental health, et cetera, and trafficking. And I was wondering, how were the parents informed so that they can participate and follow up if they choose to? So you've kind of answered the second question, but please go ahead.
We have in our parent guide, the accompanying document to the Code of Conduct, there is a notification of this required annual instruction, so that parents can view that in the Code of Conduct and Parent Guide every year. And in addition, we release a letter. When we are getting ready to engage in our Wellness Wednesday instruction, we have an annual letter that's also on our district website, but we push that out to parents and guardians before we start the instruction every year.
And they can opt out?
The State Board of Ed rule provides no opt-out for this health instruction, and they do clearly state that in the rule. And that is another reason why we really are leaning into the parent discussion points. So parents that choose to, they can view the videos each month, but also really engage in some deeper conversations with their children.
And they get to view them before they're done as a lesson?
Correct. Our intent would be to post them on the first of each month, and then the Wellness Wednesday instruction would occur on a designated date, that we publish those for families prior to the school year starting each year. But we'd like ideally the video to be up for a full 30 a calendar month.
Is there somewhere on the general, like, website that they can go and get this? If you could just send that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Where they can view those on the, at the month. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we have a tile under our Mental Health and Wellness portal, and I will send that to you.
Thank you.
And you can see the letters there now, and the explanation of why we offer this instruction. And we will, that's where we will post those videos.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Patrico?
So if I recall correctly, Wellness Wednesdays was the source of a great deal of criticism by our students, right?
Yes.
And I know that you guys were under a time crunch, so you took what was provided to you, and that was what you implemented. Now you're taking the steps to make it appropriate for Lee County kids, and make it engaging and all that. I appreciate your efforts. I wonder whether student advisory shouldn't be involved in vetting them, or taking a look, or providing you with input if they haven't already? The other thing I wonder is whether DAC should provide you with feedback from the parent perspective piece of it? If you want parents to be engaged, they might be able to provide. I think Dr. Spiro will tell you that they provide really, and you know, you've been in on a bunch of those, they provide really good real-time feedback. So just a couple of suggestions. I know this is a huge, a huge undertaking, and I, as a parent, and I know my kids will really appreciate it, because when my kids complain, this is what they complain about. So I'm happy that you're making the changes. Thank you.
And we do plan to focus group them with those two committees plus other focus groups, and I appreciate the suggestion.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, please?
Yeah, I'm wondering about teacher input on this, because I have, in the past, and I'm glad that those state videos are not being used, I've, in the past, heard a lot of criticism on teacher prep for this, that they were just, you know, different, some teachers really took these Wellness Wednesdays the way they're supposed to be done. Others were like, okay, you saw the video, you have study hall now, or what, what was the teacher input, first of all, and how will things be different in the schools for the teachers and probably the counselors, et cetera?
And that's a valid point. This has been a difficult journey with the three state Board of Education rules. While we understand the value of engaging students in this learning, there are various levels of comfort. When this is health instruction, and this is what I've been talking with students about, and my team has been as well for the last three years, some of our students feel this should be mental health counseling. They have a variety of approaches to that. Our teachers had a level of comfort or discomfort, and rightfully so. And what we continue to remind all stakeholders is that this is required health instruction. These are our health standards. And we do want to make this kind of a pain-free point for our staff, because the State Board of Ed rules put us in a position where teachers need to facilitate this. So our video instruction, instead of having a script for teachers to read as we had with the current program, the videos will be kind of the same introduction, the compelling why for our students, why are we engaging in this? And this will be done by members of our school mental health teams. So we'll have structures in these videos, why are we doing this? Now, this is the topic we're going to talk about, and they will have the pause. Now, this is the topic we're going to talk about, and they will have the pause and reflect options. And each video will conclude with, how will each student build their actual emotional toolbox, or their coping skills toolbox, and have the same type of activity at the end of each video? So that from grades 6 through 12, because K-5, we have a different approach, but 6 through 12, as this instruction scaffolds, they have this wellness toolbox that students will be filling with tools that work for them through seven grade levels all the way through graduation. So, hopefully with the structures in place, it will take some angst away from teachers who may have a level of discomfort, although we really want them to focus on the facilitation of this, because it's all about strengthening relationships with the adults in the buildings. And then our mental health team members, so our counselors, social workers, psychologists, and our licensed mental health professionals, they're there to support students that may need some more of that emotional support, either on Wellness Wednesdays or any other day. So, we want our teachers facilitating the instruction, but we really want to make that as consistent as we can.
As a follow-up, I think it's really wonderful that apparently those horrendous videos were replaced, but I'm still not hearing a lot about teacher input into this whole thing, which, not a reflection on you, but as a reflection of district attitude, has bothered me ever since I've been sitting on this board. And will there be actual, you know, you say you hope, come on, you were in...
I was in the classroom.
And there's still going to be people who either are not comfortable with any of it, or don't see the value of it, or for whatever. So, that's why I'm wondering, you know, to me, they would have more ownership had they been brought in on a deeper level. And number two, what will be pushed out to the schools, especially middle and high school, to encourage the teachers to do this the way it is meant to be done? Because it is going to put a little more on everybody's, all the teachers' plates. And so, I can see there might be some heels dug in to, you know, I teach, I teach American history, I don't have time for this. So, what's happening there?
And I do have to apologize, I meant to cover the teacher input question, and I neglected to do so. Our plan, and what we will be moving forward with, with focus groups, is not only DAC and the School Board Student Advisory. Our intent is students, parents, teachers, admin, mental health team members. So, to really push out, and you'll notice in the contract, we have a time even with the videos to focus group them before they're finalized, as we move through the curriculum development. But we have our scripts ready and our storyboarding, and we're starting with that before we even get to video production, because we are reluctant to pay someone to produce a product if the content is not focus grouped. So, that is this last quarter and into the summer, what we will be doing so that we do have feedback for all. Regarding the implementation, we will, using our principal leads and our principals as well, be pushing out after these are focus grouped and we're ready, the plan will go out too. The teachers typically have access to, even now, all of the videos, so they can do their pre-work and planning at their own pace for the year. And whenever they, most of them will do it the week or two prior, as I'm sure you're aware. And making sure that we articulate how we, our intent is that their workload and their comfort level will actually be easier and their comfort level higher, because they don't have to read a script and do all these other pieces. Yes, we want them engaging with students, but I don't want the logistics of it to weigh on them when they're super busy, and I was a classroom teacher as well. And when you have yet that one more thing, it can be, it can be the afterthought, and all of a sudden, you have to press play on a video, and you're not really ready. So...
Great. I appreciate that, all the work that you've done. It would be a shame if the follow-through wasn't just...
Yes.
Nothing's ever perfect, but a well-done follow-through. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Fisher, please.
So, yes, thank you. So, Ms. Brooks, how are the, this is grades 6 through 12, right? So, how are the teachers being identified who are going to implement this, this health education and those videos?
In the middle school level, so we worked through the executive directors and the principals when we first implemented. And so, every year, we ask them to consider what their individual school plan will be. Now, the middle schools have implemented through a subject area. I believe it's science, and that was, that was district-wide. The middle school principals liked the science subject area idea, and so they embed that on Wellness Wednesdays into the science classes. The high schools did more of a drop everything and read approach. So, some high schools do that. It depends on the time of the day they choose. A lot of high schools wanted to capture any students that might arrive late to school. So, at the end of the first block, might have been the time they do it. Others, it might have been the end of the second block. They had flexibility exactly where they placed it. However, that teacher, that period, was the facilitator of the instruction. So, we kept students connected to one of their scheduled teachers, whether it's the middle or high school approach. We did allow principals that flexibility so that they could schedule it when they felt it would be most appropriate and capture the kids in the building. None of them scheduled it at the end of a day, because we wanted to make sure if any students had any, you know, if we're talking about child trafficking prevention, and we have individuals that have experienced that, we are, it's just not good to do it at the end of the day. They might need some support.
Great. And has there been any discussion about bringing back or increasing our number of certified health education teachers?
For that, I would have to refer or defer over to curriculum or Dr. Spiro, just because I have not been in the room during discussions, and I apologize, I've just been so focused on developing the product. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Morgan? Dr. Savage?
It said Dr. Spiro, because she...
Next item, sorry, I was just preparing for the next item, if you go...
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Item H10, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation Incorporated. The question was, how have we informed parents of this program and helped them to follow up on this message with their children? We have Ms. Jessica Duncan.
Well, I think that Ms. Gittens had that, she felt that that question was answered, is that correct, Ms.?
Right. I thought it was all kind of lumped together, unless you have something more wonderful to tell.
I do not.
Okay. I'm sufficient with the answer that was given previously.
However, Ms. Jevonelli, I know this was one of your questions. Do you have anything that you need, Ms.?
That was Hannah's.
That was my, she's further down.
I'm second.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. So, Ms. Gittens' question was asked, okay. And Dr. Savage, H12?
Yes, Madam Chair. H12, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Hanley Foundation Properties Incorporated. Two questions. Please update us on how these services are utilized and working for our students in the district, as well as how are we making sure parents are informed of this program and able to follow up with their children? Again, we have Ms. Jessica Duncan.
So, we've worked with Hanley for many years. It's actually someone, something that's been in our code of conduct for a number of years, and we have previously had an MOU with them, but we haven't had one. And we wanted to go back and memorialize that relationship, because they are an important part of our code. On our Level 3, for our range of corrective strategies, the SAFE program is one option for schools. So, for a first-time drug or alcohol offense, a school can opt to use the SAFE program, which is in coordination with Hanley. And it's three meetings, two with the student and one with the student and their family. And all families can sign consent for that prior to being involved in any of that program. So, they have to agree to that as an outcome.
Okay. So, Ms. G.
Thank you. So, how long have they been, their services have been available for, at our district?
I'm not sure how far back they go. I can certainly find out, they are run through a grant, and part of their grant is to support local students with drug and alcohol prevention. So, I don't, I know that as long as, I've been in there, when I was an assistant principal, we use the SAFE program. But as far back as they go, I'm not sure, but I could certainly get that information for you.
And Ms. Fisher, did you, did you have an answer of how long?
Well, it's been several years. I would say more than six years.
So, I'm familiar, I became familiar with them, with the, and help me remember, it was called YES, and I don't remember what that stood for, but it was regarding, that's when I, that's when I, I was at a meeting with like the sheriff and the, I was like a whole bunch of people, discipline. It was before I was even elected. It was called YES or something like that, and I can't remember what it stands for. But I remember that, them coming on. But we didn't have MOU then, I mean, we didn't, so we're just now getting MOU years later?
I found an MOU that went back, I want to say about five or six years ago, that was implemented, and for some reason, that wasn't continued. So, we definitely want to, I mean, there's no fund, we pay nothing, they have a grant, so we just benefit from their services. But we wanted to memorialize that so that, you know, individuals knew that we were working with them, and that schools knew that we had this relationship with them. That was really the purpose of this MOU. They are a community agency, so they could have several other things that they do, and they work throughout the community. So, the school is just one facet of what they do. They also work with other organizations, so they could have other, other programs as well.
How many schools are they in?
They could go to any, because as part of our code of conduct, it's any that requests their support. I can tell you right now, I know through the, through the SAFE program, they have supported, they've received 125 referrals. That's been through 12 different schools, so, oh, so, I'm sorry, 16 different schools, and anybody can access them, so they're available to everyone.
So, how do the principals, and how are they, they aware of the service? You know what I'm saying? That's, so, because I think it's a great program, so I'm just wanting, trying to tell our story. So, like, so how do, how do the schools know about their services? I mean, how are they aware, just through the principal, or...
And through student services. So, when we have trainings, we share that through the principals. A lot of times, we repeatedly share through the assistant principals, who are often involved with the discipline component. And then it is in the Level 3, when you look, it's specifically stated in there, the SAFE program.
I know it was kind of key and kind of important regarding the sort of, the restorative practices, and so I'm very in favor of that. So, thank you.
Ms. Gittens, did you have any other thing to add?
Yeah. I understand how the other previous program informed parents. Is this the same? Is this in parent university? Is it, you know, put out there prior to with a notification that we're going to do this, or that your child is, is up to be in this program? How does that work?
So, they've worked directly with schools regarding the individual programming. So, I could reach out to the schools and see what, what format they use to notify families, if it's embedded in any instruction. But they do work directly with sites and do their outreach directly to the schools. That hasn't been through student services. But certainly, you know, with the parents' report and all of that, we can work directly with them and try to do something consistent with that, so that families are aware of that practice in schools.
So, this is more, though, of, is this, a school then refers a child to the program?
For disciplinary reasons, yes. So, if it's a first offense, drug or alcohol violation, this is one option that an administrator can use, is to use this program in lieu of another consequence. So, yes, and that's available to everyone. They do have instructional programs as well, related to vaping, alcohol, and a number of other things related to drug and alcohol abuse.
If you were a parent and you knew of these and you wanted to get your child involved, then do you go to the administrator, your counselor at school? How would you say, you know, I met with Sam, can you help me and can they get into this program?
You could. So, they do work directly with families, as to, and other community agencies, so they get referrals from other areas, they can get referrals from school. When they meet with families through the SAFE program, they also let them know of other training opportunities, and families can access those as well. Doesn't have to be simply through school.
As, and that sounds like it's more of a, after the child is involved in it, is there a preventative piece of this?
They are out at community events and other, so they would share their information just like another community agency would. We have an upcoming event where I know they'll have a table on April 5th. So, they do a lot of outreach through community activities, and the same way that other, you know, nonprofit agencies in the area would as well.
And it's on our website as well as a resource for parents?
I'm not sure if it's on our website, but we can certainly, I mean, part of this MOU is memorializing that relationship, and then once we have that, that, that would certainly be a great place to put some additional information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Savage? Please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item I2, is the approval of the budget amendment dated February 28, 2022, to amend the 2122 annual school budget? And for that, we have Ms. Kelly Letcher, our Director of Budget.
Hello. So, when you approve the budget at the beginning of the year, part of that is you're approving money that's in the schools and departments? And really what, mainly what you're seeing in this monthly budget amendment, they're moving money within their schools and within their departments based on their current needs. So, you know, really, and I mentioned this, they, in September, when we're budgeting, we don't have everything set at the schools at that point. They're still going through and, or, you know, getting their stuff. We run the reports in August, so they're still trying to get their stuff together. So, that, you'll see those as they make changes. One of your questions had to do specifically with the money that was in the instruction, instructional salaries, and exactly what that 509,000 was. 360,000 of that was moving funds from positions into supplements for teachers that are working through their planning for semester changes, for the second semester. So, say a high school needed one more subject of math, and they didn't want to, they couldn't hire a full math teacher, they would have a math teacher teach through planning and use the salary that was sitting there for another position that they couldn't fill in order to put that in that supplement for them. So, that would change from your instructional salaries to your instructional supplemental or your 5-3 area to pay for that.
If I may?
Yes, please.
So, when we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the fact that if you had 100 hires for teachers and you only hired 70, that 30, the amount for the 30 goes into reserves?
Into the school's reserve.
Into the school's reserves.
Correct.
So, this, you're saying, though, they take that out of their reserves to do this?
Yes. They could move it from their reserves in order to pay somebody to teach through their planning. They could take it from their instructional reserve to hire another position that's needed, maybe a para or another area that they need. So, that's their flexibility to make that change within their school.
So, I know we had discussed the possibility of, when I brought that up a few weeks ago, about using some of that money in reserve to, to help pay the people that were covering all these classes.
And we are.
But basically, you're saying, too, we have to be careful with that, because it is used for, that reserve is not just sitting there, it's used for other things.
That, the one at the school, the teach, the school reserve for their, their district resource allocation reserve, is sat there, it's given to them based on their weighted FTE, so the number of students in their weights. And then they utilize those dollars to fit the needs of their schools, because every school has needs that are different and unique based on their student population. So, they will adjust. We just make sure they have enough teachers to meet the class size, that they have enough positions budgeted, or they do something like this, where they move money from their salaries to their supplemental to cover those teaching through planning times, in order to make that happen.
So, when they get ready to do that, do they have to get approval through you guys to do that?
They, yes. So, for the, we need to know when, what, who they're going to pay for teaching through their planning for the semester. So, they send a list down, and we go through, and we actually move that money for them. They don't have the ability to move that piece of it. So, we do that movement for them to cover that. And anytime they're making a change in their district resource allocation, they have a file that is sent to them, and they just make that change in the file, send it back to my office. My office processes it, sends the notification to HR to let them know of the change, and back to the school to let them know that it's been processed.
Okay.
Okay. Some other areas that are in that 500,000... sends the notification to HR to let them know of the change, and back to the school to let them know that it's been processed.
Okay.
Okay. Some other areas that are in that $500,000, just to let you know. The schools are given money from their supplemental academic instruction funds. Those are the funds to help their lowest performing students. And they write, they send a plan in every year on how they want to utilize those dollars. Some of them will hold some money to wait till throughout the year to see how best to utilize. A lot of people use, you know, to hire positions to help those lower performing students. Some of them want to purchase materials to help with that. And so some of the movement you'll see is where they're moving the money from their supplemental academic instruction funds over to purchase materials or to hold money for summer school or something like that.
But when they decide at the school, this is what they want to do, they inform your department, you do it for them. Is there ever a time that you say, well, maybe this isn't the best or?
So if we, so we're not the academic people, right? So if we have questions, if something looks questionable to us, we will send it to Academic Services and ask them to please review the request and make sure that it's appropriate. And they'll send back and let us know if it is or it isn't. And if it isn't, they'll contact the school and walk through with them what it is they're trying to do. So. Okay. Your next question had to do with the 998 accounts and the percent of reserves. So I just want to make it clear that in 998, that's the reserves that we use for our capital, our self-insured funds, and our food service. We do not use that in the general fund. So you will not find that object code in the general fund. However, just for the general fund purposes, you also asked what percents, and we have set aside for different things. In the general fund, we have the 3% contingency that we hold to this side, which is required that we can't drop below the 3%. We also set aside, remember in the beginning, our discussions about the FES and MCA, where I never know how much the scholarships are going to come in. So I held $9 million aside when I was doing the original budget to cover the FES and MCA. Those came in well over $9 million, so that reserve is gone. And I also had to go into the FTE shortfall, which I also held for $9 million. As you remember in our conversations during the budget process, that $9 million is so that I don't have to, if we have a shortfall in FTE, I don't have to go back to the schools and make adjustments. And that is down to 2.1 million right now after my FES and MCA adjustments. So that one is down as well. As far as our other funds, our self-insured fund remains where it was when the budget was approved, and they're doing fine. Food service has come way down, and we're watching that one very closely. As you all know, the price of food has skyrocketed, and so we're watching food service funds very closely for that one. Capital funds are still on task. Remember, we look at that one at a five-year period. It was a little over 5%. We still believe we're going to be sitting at a 5% reserve at those five years to continue with those projects that are ongoing on throughout. I think that was the questions. Did I miss anything?
I think you covered it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Dr. Savage?
Thank you. Madam Chair, next up is item J-1, Approval of Personnel Recommendations General. These are pretty lengthy, so we'll just go through them. Change of Assignment, Location and Position, Effective Date, Kathleen Wilson Eball, Director of Planning. From Director of Planning, Growth and Capacity to Coordinator of District Planning, Transfer Change of Assignment, Michael Galbraith from Trafalgar Middle Principal to District Planning, Director of Planning, Growth and Capacity. Please advise the changes in these two positions. We should be selecting individuals that have vast expertise in planning and development. This is not on the job training, which was evident in the last election. There seems to be a pattern of blunders, especially in the STERO that cost the taxpayers. This is the first example of dysfunctional hiring process and waste of public funds, which in turn is malfeasance. This is placing inexperienced individuals in positions that lead to misuse of tax dollars. I recommend this position be put on hold until the new superintendent is in place. Provide me with a complete list of applicants, their resumes. Need to review this information over the weekend, not last minute. Please advise why an individual has been demoted several times, that has given misinformation and incorrect numbers in the STERO regarding student growth is leading the briefing on the actual correct information growth. What were the dates that the position of Director of Planning, Growth, and Capacity advertised? Please send Michael Galbraith's resume. Please send a list of other applicants, including their experience in planning and their final rankings. Kathy Eball will become District Plan Coordinator. Joel DeGuzman currently has this job title. Will there be two coordinators with the identical position? And last is, the discussion was held with the board previously to provide resumes of the top candidates for administrative positions. Please provide information regarding the planning growth position. So I think thematically, you can hear some of those pieces. Mr. Dodig, feel free to begin.
Sure. The resumes of the applicants have been provided to the board, or to at least the board office or the superintendent's office. That includes Dr. Galbraith's resume. This position was advertised from February 14th to February 19th, 2022, 14th to 19th. This is a transfer. This is not a new employee. The School Board policy requires that a superintendent that's transferring an employee bring the matter to the School Board for approval. So it's a transfer under School Board Policy 5.30. Ms. Eball will be occupying what was a vacant coordinator position in the Planning Department. That is not Mr. DeGuzman's position. There was a vacant position in planning.
Was that Ms. Huff's, Don Huff's old position? Do you know?
I don't know, standing here. I don't know.
How long was this position vacant then?
I don't know. I can find out for you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, because we continuously, not having the right, all due respect, but we continuously not have the right person in the right job. And I'm really concerned that we put a principle in planning and that I just don't understand that, how that's related and how that job can be related into a, and we have planning issues, so.
I think the superintendent is prepared to respond to that.
I'm happy to do so. Well, just like so many things, obviously, this first and foremost, this really is an operational item. I mean, this is absolutely about picking people to run the organization, which we have an obligation to do. Dr. Galbraith was a finalist for the executive position, which Mr. Ross holds. He was also a finalist for the maintenance director position. So while he is a principal, he actually began his career in the construction field, so much so he had experiences in doing concrete foundation work, framing, roofing, trim carpentry, laying floors, hanging sheet rock, installing electrical wiring, installing plumbing, cabinetry, air conditioning units. He actually studied in college structural engineering and architecture with a goal to become a general construction contractor. You know, he, this is not, you know, while we have principals, that does not mean that all principals come to the table exactly the same. Part of our opportunity in operations being one of the most challenging areas is that Mr. Ross is an executive and an excellent executive choice in this particular area, needs to have the leadership that he needs. I'm not going to get into the evaluation of an existing staff member who's in that role here in this public meeting. But I would say, just on the record, as pertaining to Ms. Eball, because I understand some of the questions implied, you know, she's extremely experienced in the planning world, not just in school-based planning as she was in Sarasota, but she's also extremely experienced in the municipal planning area. And as we know, planning in this particular district is not just one thing, it is so many things. So while we talk about the real estate acquisitions, while we talk about, you know, the understanding of what to file with the state in terms of those pieces. For our district, one of the biggest aspects of it also in the day-to-day operations of the district is how the student assignment and the budget department rely upon the information of our program, our program capacity, which is set by us and is amended by us and is essential for us up running our schools. And that has to be very much data-driven. One of the other great gifts Dr. Galbraith brings, aside from just the tremendous passion in this particular area, is he is very, very strong from a numeric standpoint. So part of my job as a superintendent is to ensure that we have complementary pieces of people who can really support the work. So one of the challenges in operations presently, there aren't a lot of folks on the facility side that have ever run a school, which again are like businesses, multimillion-dollar businesses, where they've had to hire staff, fire staff, be organized to achieve objectives, have the accountability that schools are used to. So when you put an experienced principal with a deep passion for this and background in that particular area, who was a finalist in a competitive process for all these other areas, you know, it's an opportunity for some value-add while at the same time leveraging Ms. Eball's tremendous experience in the municipal planning and the school-based planning expertise, which she does have, as a part of that team. Mr. DeGuzman as well. There's just a lot to this, and so without, I just don't want to go down a rabbit hole of assessing any of those other pieces, other than to say, the work of this district has to continue every day. And while as a board, governance team, I certainly don't expect you to get into the weeds of every aspect of what we run. When we're in the budget process and the numbers that we're relying upon for all of our student assignment and our budgets and all of that, we have to be sure that those numbers are correct, just as you've noted in the growth numbers and all those other pieces. We have to have a surety around those pieces. And right now, we're having to, we have to pay additional services through Davis Demographics to complement these additional pieces. These are the kinds of things that we are, as an operations side, we are really working to make sure we have the right people and the right seats to contribute effectively. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm going to go to Ms. Vaughn and then Ms. Patrica.
Okay. Well, I have a number of things to come back to what Dr. Savage just said. I don't know Dr. Galbraith. He might be a wonderful principal. He was runner-up to other positions. But that doesn't mean that let's just give him whatever the next director position is. This is not on the job training. Ms. Giavonelli used that phrase. I had done a follow-up to Dr. Savage about this. And one of the things, Dr. Savage, I want to bring up is, in my follow-up to all of this, I said how much I regret it that this was not a discussion in the one-on-one. Because when we bring it up here from the table, we get a lot more personal on these things, which I'm going to try to avoid. But I've been used to having these things when somebody is being brought after a bare week of advertisement. And I noticed Dr. Galbraith had his letter in the mail, so to speak, on the 15th of February. So he did a lot of work on that. He knew it was coming up. And this is not how we work as a district. We got the other resumes, I think just earlier today. I was kind of half listening and reading. Frankly, the person that's had the most experience unfortunately doesn't have the leadership. But it was a lady, and she had the most experience in this. Other people, I'm sorry, I just don't know what they're thinking, that they're thinking because they're a good principal or even an AP, that they can do this planning. We have had some major, major gaffes that have cost the taxpayers a lot of money. In my follow-up, I wrote in capital letters, "We need an experienced professional from the planning, in planning." I'm gonna, I am not going to support Dr. Galbraith's on this. And I believe in statute, one of the reasons is also feeling that a person is not qualified. I don't have the job description right up here in front of me, but I went through the job description. The minimum qualifications are not met. They're not met really, except for the one candidate who doesn't have the necessary leadership qualities, or that person would be the best. I am also going to, and I'm going to notify the board right now, I'm going to bring forth the suggestion that, A, we don't have any more director and above positions filled until Dr. Bernier is sworn in, and that's only six weeks from now. I understand, I listened to you, Dr. Savage, what you said. We've been limping along at great cost, mistakes made, and it was by an experienced professional. So experienced professional doesn't always mean as much as it should. But finally, I'm reading, not just from our district, but in the news. We are one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, not just here in Florida. And the number of acquisitions of land, the number of schools that we need to build, the capacity, yeah. Well, why did we hire Davis Demographics? Because we didn't have the software to do the kinds of things that they were doing. So that was necessary, and I'm very anxious to hear what they have to say, because there were some real surprises in that report, on a tenure report. So I will not be supporting this because I feel actually that there are no qualified candidates. And this is not, you know, there are no qualified candidates, so let's just put a runner-up or a guy that's been a man, who's been a wonderful principal, let's just do that and hope for the best. No, that's to me, as a board member, unacceptable. And I will be bringing forth no more transfers into director positions or any of that until after Dr. Bernier is sworn in. So that's my position on this.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Patrica, please.
So, yeah, I did send an email requesting information on this, and I did not receive a response. I'm hoping that I could have a one-on-one conversation with you, because I don't like having this conversation in public. I don't think it's appropriate. So if I could have a one-on-one, without that one-on-one, I can't support this either. But I'm assuming in the one-on-one, you can provide me with the information I need. So if we can just get to that before tomorrow night at 6:00, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I have to agree with the comments so far that, and I was thinking it's difficult for me to support this at this time as well. You know, on one hand, looking at Mr. Galbraith and Ms. Silcox, he's got leadership and education, but she's got true job experience in doing what we need done. And, you know, we can't clone them, but we can't give up this and have this, or give up this and have that. I tend to agree with my colleagues that, given the situation we're in as far as planning and the upheaval that we've had in the last couple of years, that we lost some strategic positions that really have not been filled, I'll put air quotes around that, and since they were, you know, left open. I think we have an issue with this area. And I agree that we need to look into it further before we make these decisions.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. Yes. And after reviewing the resumes and not having had a conversation about the whole gamut, I would also request more information one-on-one, and I won't be supporting this at this time either.
Madam Chair? Yes, Ms. Gittens?
I believe at one point, I can't remember when, we had another discussion about a position or a director. And there was a question brought forth that when these are presented to us, to give us all of this information at that time, am I, you know, forgetting? Because I thought we said, to avoid this, that we would receive that information, the resumes or whatever, that would help us to move forward with some of this.
I believe you are correct on that one, and that we would have conversation notification ahead of time, even though we do understand that this is something that the superintendents, it's their position to do that. But that is always something that's good to have, is to have that conversation with the board to let them know, and no surprises. Because it is, I know my ex was a planner, and he would never have been able to work for the county or any county without having that degree in planning as a planner. But there again, when you're speaking, it's being spoken about, there's a lot more than just the planning aspect of this. So is it a planner that we're looking for, or is it something else? So, and the one person that's on there as well has been moved from this position to this position to this position, who? this position to this position, who is a planner, a true planner. So I guess I would want to have more conversation on this as well.
Ms. Morgan, do you have anything to?
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Can I just add something? Regarding the minimum qualifications, of course, Human Resources looks at that, and I would just state, there are three bullets. A master's degree or higher is required. He has a doctorate. The second bullet is seven years of administrative professional or technical experience in planning educational facilities or related field. Okay? And the third is that management experience, including planning, organizing, directing, clearly, he has that as a principal, and the development and management of a large budget. He has managed a large budget. He's a principal of a middle school. So it is our position, we would not be here putting this forward if he didn't meet the minimum qualifications. There is no moral turpitude issues. I will leave it at that.
Not to be rude or anything, but you could have a master's degree and a doctorate in, I don't know, hospitality, but you're not going to go be a doctor.
If the job description said that that's a minimum qualification...
That's a minimum qualification. I get that part. So yes, in that respect, yes, I get that.
And furthermore, I would just say, from the timing standpoint, I understand that all of our current principal, we have a whole process right now so that these positions could be noticed, so that folks could apply for the various positions. And that's where we are at, again, with the budget, needing to appoint people to schools, needing to hire for recruitment fairs, wanting to retain staff, involve schools in the selection of their principals. All those things take significant time, so the notion that this could somehow wait until mid-May, again, is just another concern that I would have in saying that somehow the operation can't continue. Secondly, we have an obligation to staff the schools. This is work that's occurring right now. This is challenges we're having to go through from a budget standpoint, to ensure that the appropriate capacities we have in the varying schools we have are being properly managed. These are very significant operational items that putting a hold on. There's a reason why we bring these forward, because we're responsible for the day-to-day operations. Again, it is a ministerial act when the board is approving a candidate. As long as they're meeting the minimum qualifications and they have not committed any acts of moral turpitude, that is really the role. The resumes that are given, to my understanding, is a courtesy, so that the board members feel that they can at least familiarize themselves, not to evaluate which candidate might have been the best, not participate in the screening process or the interviewing process or the scoring process in any way, but simply to, as a courtesy, to be aware that as the governance level in this organization, that these bare, basic minimums are met. If I'm wrong on that, I'd be happy to be clarified.
Mr. Prue Bruno? And then I'm going to go to Ms. Gittens, Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. G.
So the board can object if, one, there is moral turpitude, or, two, the board does not feel that this candidate is qualified for the position. Those are the two basic legal principles. I cannot advise anything other than that, because I have not seen the job description or anything like that, but those are the two legal principles.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Gittens, please.
You know, for one thing, and with all due respect, I, we tend to be at this point so often that timing, we have to do this because of timing. I think we need to step back and look at, we have to do something because it's either right or not the right thing to do at this time. And that being said, if the only, if the issue, and we tend to have a lot of issues with this planning and development, so maybe it would mean looking at that job description. Maybe there is too much in one side, and maybe it should be two people, because you're looking at someone who has to work with the local government, who has to work with, you know, our building and our facilities and all of those. That's a different thing than a leadership person that has been in education, that knows what a school functions like, and they can give that input. It's two different mindsets, actually. And what one brings to the table and the other brings to the table are both needed and necessary, and maybe they're not one in the same. And I don't think I'm crazy about this, but I just, maybe we need to step back and look at the job description. If this is a continual issue, and has been an issue for the last several years, that we have not fulfilled to the highest regard this position in this department, it's just been in flux. So maybe we need to stop and look at, I'm not saying HR did not do what they were supposed to do.
No, no, no. If I could just speak to one thing, this principal job has been advertised, and we are interviewing for several principal positions that are going to be vacant, either in the near future or at the beginning of next school year, on Saturday of this week. So there's a process afoot, is I think the point that was being made. No urgency, except for the fact that this candidate's on the board agenda tomorrow night.
But my point, and then I'll be finished with this. My point is, you're saying we have an urgent need to go ahead and follow through with a principal position, and we're looking at a position that has such high visibility, regard, and need over the whole working of this district, and someone that's in planning. That is an extremely important position. Not saying the principal position isn't, but this is something that we really have to make, you know, stop and think and make the right decision. I'm not saying that none of them are, but...
And the superintendent certainly believes that he has done that, so that's why I'm here.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I'm going to repeat that I'm using the part of the statute to object, the part that I do not feel this candidate is qualified, nor do I really feel that any of the candidates are qualified. And I point out again that the resumes were accepted through February 19th, which is, what, five, six weeks ago. I also bring up, with all due respect, Dr. Savage, there was not, at least in any one-on-one that I was in, any discussion of this. And listening to what a couple others have said at the table, it doesn't sound like this was brought up at all. This is not a stepping stone position. This is a position where, and I put it in my follow-up to you, Dr. Savage, and I copied Mr. Doty, I want to see, quote, "top-notch planning professional" in the role. We have too much growth. I suggested that the item be tabled, was my first suggestion. Ms. Patrica said something to that effect, that she wants a one-on-one between now and then. I'm sorry, the additional information that you gave me about somebody who's done carpentry, a lot of people do carpentry, working their way through school or as a hobby, or, that's not what a planner does. Are you kidding me? Our planner is a person that goes out and evaluates land and capacity, and obviously, considering the debacle at Tower Road, the debacle that we've had with the planning of our school in Astero, the K-8 school in Astero and others, we haven't had a strong, I mean, this requires somebody strong in this area. And I don't care what, you can nitpick what it says, experience in planning. Heck, I have experience in planning, 38 years. Hey, that's not the same kind of planning that this is. This is very specific planning. I oppose this. I think it was, I think it was a huge gaffe, sorry, on the part of administration, not bringing it to us as a board to look at. I believe that because of things moving ahead now, that this individual perhaps feels that he's a shoo-in, that it's just a vote by the board, and he will be the one, that he already has it locked in. Mr. Doty just said, oh, we're already advertising for a principal. What does that tell me?
We have to plan ahead.
Well, you have a principal at that school, and you plan ahead and find a principal, and maybe there's going to be another principal position that would be open for that person. I'm going to object to this. I said I wish it were tabled, so we wouldn't have to get into this nastiness. But no, we didn't get prior information, and I'm going to bring up about no more director and above until the new superintendent. I'm going to put that forth at a board meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Giovanelli?
Okay, so I do have the job description, and it says a master's, it's a touchscreen, and I touched it. So it says, you know, "A master's degree in major educational facility planning, urban planning, and business admin administration." But, I mean, I think...
Or other field.
Yes, but, so that's where I'm getting at. I think that we need to look at this job description. I think it's too generic, and I think that that's where we've kind of gone sideways here, because we have a history already. We have repeated situations in the past where we did not have the proper planning in place. So that is what we're, that's what the deficiency is, and a principal's not going to fill that void that we're missing. So that's, and a one-on-one would be great, but I don't think you're going to convince me with these resumes on a one-on-one that these are going to qualify for what our real need is. And that is the issue. It has nothing to do with the candidates at all. It has to do with the issues that we have had in the past. I personally spoke to the city, and they specifically told me, we do not play nice in the sandbox regarding planning, where our schools need to be, and where our, and that goes with the county as well. This is a joint collaborative effort that we must be able to get back in with our other city planners and county planners and work together, because we need schools. That's evident, because we're about to talk about that tomorrow, and it's clear that we need schools. So that's not going to change. And getting the right person on the right seat of the bus is what's important here. And that's where I'm at. So I think that if we, I think that we have a new superintendent coming on, and I think this needs to look at with some fresh eyes and a look at the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan, go ahead, please. Ms. Morgan, go ahead, please.
Thank you. In looking to the comments that my colleagues have made, the problem that we have is that we have not had a chief operations officer for over two years, which we have, we don't have confidence in that division, that we need to have a chief operations, a highly-qualified chief operations officer, recruiting people for key positions in this district.
Okay, Ms....
What I think people say is that they don't believe in the power of the superintendent.
I am so sorry. Can you hear me?
A good reputation.
Ms. Morgan?
To have a last-year chief to do these jobs in a way that, that's the need of the best, and those are my comments.
Thank you. So I believe what you said, because it was really hard to understand, a lot of it was real gerbil, but you were saying that because of the fact that we've had a position open for two years, the chief officer for that department, that has been an issue? Is that correct?
Yes.
In a nutshell, that's what it was.
A chief operations officer is crippling our operations and undermining our confidence and recognition being made, so it lowers the whole position in that vision.
Thank you. I got that part. Okay, so we are, thank you, Ms. Morgan, and we are at, we're over about 10 minutes right now on just this one item. So Ms. Gittens, I'm going to go ahead, please.
I'm just going to go very quickly. What I have seen in my time with the board and looking at planning, that planning is not so much as like futuristic as it is, the person that sits there continues what was planned previously. And I think that's where part of our issue is. Plans are made in 2015, 16, and whoever sits there is just a continuation, rather than looking at, the world has changed, the country's changed, the state, the county, and all have changed, and we don't look at our planning as changing to keep up with the changes that are going on around us. And that's my comment.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Savage, I know you had a comment that will go to the next...
I know, just very briefly. You know, just again, I want to clarify for the record, this is not a stepping stone position. So any belief that this is a reward for a lateral move, this is about getting people on the right seat on the bus, which is, on the operational side, the job to be done at this level. That is our job. That means when I have an executive director who does supervise those areas, they need to have directors they can rely on to do the work that needs to be done day in, day out. That is not a board-level task. That is our operational task. It is why we bring people forward. As HR said, we've analyzed that piece. Furthermore, to say, just unequivocally, a principal will not fill the void, quite frankly, you know, that's assuming that all principals are the same. This is a principal, obviously, studied in this particular area, had a passion to be a general contractor, just happened to also be a principal. They bring unique gifts to the table. The other advantage is they are a big part of the design process in designing new facilities. When I came to that area, one of the powerful elements that I brought to the team was, I actually understand what it looks like when a school's actually being run. And when you're trying to analyze a facility, having a lot of folks on a team, none of which have ever led a school, makes it very difficult in all the decisions that impact schools in very profound ways. Right people, right seat on the bus, that's the purview. The last thing I'll just mention is, we've had a lot of people come through this organization that have no background in schools, no background in this piece, and they have come, sometimes they stay a very short period of time. I'm just thinking off the top of my head, internal audit, had a highly-qualified person with many, many years, that person's no longer here. We had professional standards come in, bring with a wealth of investigative background, that person is no longer here. We've had the IT side, where we bring in a former CEO, one of the world-class type of talents, that person is no longer here. Communications, tremendous background, no longer here. When you start adding all the different people, this idea that a uniquely-qualified person that will walk through the door and be able to do all these things, just because we advertise it, and that that will all of a sudden happen, is just, unfortunately, when I analyze the data on this, we actually had that. We had a person who was hired for the executive role, who is really an expert in planning, who's done it both at the school and a municipal level. So it's just, the notion that somehow we're not asking all the right questions and analyzing this piece, it's just, I understand, that's your right to question that piece. I would just, again, clarify, we all have jobs to do, and if the board says definitively that you do not want anything to happen, that is your call to make. But every minute, I have to make recommendations that I can stand behind, trusting on the reliance of staff who go through that interview process, who hear the substantive answers that candidates give for their questions, who analyze what a person's potential gifts and value adds to our organization are, and seizing not just the right person in the right seat, but at the right time. You have the right to sit from your perspective and have whatever opinion you have on that piece. So I just want to make sure I shared all those additional pieces as well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm not questioning any of that. We didn't have a discussion about it. We didn't have a one-on-one discussion about it. And I think that, I know I've had the conversation with you in the past, that if it's on the admin agenda item, I just need to have the conversation with you. And that's why I'm requesting the one-on-one, and perhaps you can give me the information I need before tomorrow night. But I think somebody said, no surprises. When I opened this agenda, it was a surprise to me, because I expect the admin agenda items under personnel to be a topic in one-on-ones. That's really bottom line for me. I'm not questioning you, I'm not questioning you. It's just a communication issue for me. And again, you know, I re-forwarded the email that I sent on the 25th. That's really all my email says, is, we haven't discussed this? Please advise. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Okay, we are on J-2. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, J-2, approval of a...
J2, approval of a second of two two-year contract extensions with Johns Eastern Incorporated. Please provide us with what they do and the benefits of using this company. We have Mr. Dotick.
Sure. So Johns Eastern is our third-party administrator and they've been in business for over 75 years. For the past 18 years, they've provided us in handling our workers' compensation liability and property claims. We have two onsite representatives from Johns Eastern that work closely with the school board attorney and insurance and benefits to facilitate the resolution of claims to minimize the district's costs. The adjusters also pursue at-fault third parties and in the last year, we've recovered $134,095 because of their work. This is the final renewal of this current contract and it will go out to bid in late 2023. This contract expires 6/30/24.
Ms. Javonelli, did you have any other questions regarding this?
No, that was just for, actually, just the public to understand what we do.
Thank you.
So that would take care of--
One more.
Yep, thanks. Six and seven?
That's the next, is J5, six and seven. This is the approval of the affiliation agreement with Barry University, affiliation agreement with University of Phoenix, affiliation agreement with St. Petersburg College. And the question was, please explain the benefit and relationship of these agreements. Mr. Dotick?
Sure. So Barry University, this is, our last agreement with them expired and they are interested in working with us so their therapy students, students that are studying therapy can get experience. University of Phoenix, the last agreement we have on file from them was 2017. It expired and the university is interested again in field experiences and placements for educational preparation, students that are studying education. And St. Petersburg College, we are currently hosting a full-time special education intern and a full-time secondary math intern. And this past fall, we hosted two final interns and both were hired into our district when they graduated in December. So we're looking for employees and this is a way to cultivate that.
Gee?
No, just thank you so much. I like, this is part of telling the story. So I'm going to ask questions periodically so people know what we're doing and, I mean, because we're trying to recruit, recruit, recruit.
And retain.
And retain.
Yes.
But we got to keep recruiting, recruiting, recruiting. But so, and I just think it's a, it's a great, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for telling the story, Ms. Gee. And then we have Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. L9, approval of expenditure for ITN number N207380RC, which is the paving services. The two questions were, please provide me with all the bid information, scoring as well as references that secured this bid. What bucket of monies does this come from? More information needed on 1.8 million possible expenditure on two tracks. What schools? So today, we have, it looks like Ms. Sedeno and Mr. Ross potentially.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Barbara Sedeno from Maintenance Services and--
First question.
Okay. So the first question is regarding the monies, where do they come from? So Maintenance Services actually has two projects within our department. One is for day-to-day operations and the secondary is for capital projects. Therefore, this project and this bid will be funded with Maintenance Services dollars.
Do you have any other--
And for the second part of the question regarding the schools for the 1.8 million dollars for the tracks, going, dating back probably about five, six years ago, the COO at that time instructed maintenance staff to go on a rotation strategy for tracks, basically doing two a year with the new upgraded track material that is though more expensive, safer for the students on their feet and on their knees and also in terms of just upkeep, a little more efficient. So they've been doing that two-a-year rotation. So normally you would see two schools on there. I've asked, along with David LaRosa, our academic, or excuse me, our athletic director, to relook at that rotation. We just want to make sure we're being strategic in terms of our expenditure, make sure we're equitable in terms of the zones and the schools that we're putting them in and make sure they just, the proper use of those dollars at those tracks that they're being prepared at. So coming forth here in the next month or so, we've asked our maintenance department to present to the board at a workshop on our tracks, kind of the conditions of them, the different events that happen at them, the programs at the different schools and, you know, bring a recommendation forward for your approval to maybe the different strategies we may look at in terms of a new rotation for tracks. So that is why the specific schools are not listed on this one. Again, we'll be bringing a full presentation on district-wide track strategy in the near future.
Did you have any questions on that, Ms. --
Yeah, and so there are different materials that are more updated and safer, right?
Correct, correct.
I think we were told that when, wasn't there just a grant or something?
Yes.
Was it Fort Myers?
Well, that was actually for the field. That was actually the turf field. So we're actually talking about the actual track. But same, same principle, there are different new technologies.
New technologies that are not as hard, I guess, on feet.
On feet and knees, correct.
I'm not an athlete, so I don't know about those things.
Right. So we want to look at that to make sure we're kind of going in the right direction, relook at that strategy that was previously put in forth.
Okay, yeah, because what was a little confusing is depending on what the board decided on and just, because it would take a long time. I don't, how long does paving normally last on a track with 15 schools?
Well, with the polyurethane track, which is the more updated version of it because of its flexibility and durability, that one can, it really depends on, you know, our continuous maintenance that we have to perform on it, so it can go 10 years plus. There might be some other things that we may have to do as far as like, like just a top coating, just to help preserve and seal it additionally. So it will outlast like a regular asphalt track.
Okay, yeah. And so you didn't say, you said possible expenditure and looking forward. It sounds like it may cost a little more, but A, it'll last longer, but even more important, it won't be as, it'll be safer for the athletes and PE classes that run on the track, right?
Correct.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, and I do want to know, we have already been doing these tracks. So these are the tracks we've been doing two a year with this new polyurethane material.
Oh, okay.
Correct. So this is us relooking at that, making sure again, we're putting those in the right place and they're being used correctly.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
Okay, so I requested the--
The bucket.
The bid and scoring and references to secure the bid. I didn't receive any of that information. So I would like to see that because I see that one of the vendors is, actually was a locksmith vendor, so I don't understand the paving and that I'd have, I'll need to see that. And then second, I was told just recently that Fort Myers High was getting their track repaved. That was going to happen this spring. So now you're telling me that the schedule may change and we're going to have a meeting or, you know, a workshop or something on that?
So for your first question, procurement did provide the superintendent's office those documents regarding the bid, so I think they can get that information to you. And in regards of the track rotation, Fort Myers track was actually not on the rotation for this year. However, with the grant that was done for the turf field, it is a more cost-effective to do the field and the track at the same time, given all this site work, the irrigation work that needs to be done. So which brought reason for relooking at our rotation, relooking at our strategy with this turf field in need for the Fort Myers track. So it is very likely, given that statement with the cost effectiveness, that Fort Myers track will be one of the tracks done this year and that will be upcoming in our recommendations.
Okay, because I know I specifically asked that question recently and actually gave it out to a constituent so that it was going to be spring, that the track was going to be done at Fort Myers High. So--
Basically, what he's saying is originally it wasn't because it was predated the grant that was received. Now that they have the grant for the turf, it makes sense to do the track. It's just more cost-effective to do the track.
Sooner than later.
Correct. So that is part of, that's part of the reason for this being worded exactly the way it is.
Correct.
Because you're going over the track to get to the field, to redo the field, the turf, so it makes sense to do it all at the same time.
Right. Otherwise, you're damaging the track when you're doing the field.
Correct, correct.
I get it.
Yes. So yes, so Fort Myers High School turf project was, is part of the reason for us looking at this, our tracks again, but also just a normal rotation that we want to look at that strategy.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing what you bring back.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. L10, approval of the total project cost estimate, Phase 2A revised for the Veterans Park and Academy of the Arts renovation. Question was, please provide a timeline with total cost to date for the past three years of this renovation. Why is this not included in the last update? What is being revised? We have, last but not least, Mr. Scott Rickenbacher.
And Mr. Rickenbacher, we have a four-minute warning. No, just kidding.
Well, I gave you the answer, so we should be able to cut it to a couple of seconds if you read my responses. Was there any questions on the responses we provided you in terms of the timeline?
That's on the agenda?
Where is it? Where's the response? Where's the information?
I'm happy to read it for him if you'd like.
I mean, I can go through it.
Please go ahead.
Is it somewhere that you send it to us?
Yeah, we answered the questions you guys have.
They answer the superintendent. So when these answers, when these questions go to the superintendent, the superintendent sends them out and the answers go back to him and he has all the answers.
But I can go through it. I brought paperwork. I always bring my secondary measures.
Unless there are additional questions, Scott, please go ahead.
On January 11th of 2022, you guys engaged and approved the Phase 1 total project cost for 17,693,271 for VPAA renovation project. There was a revision to that, which came to you on March 8th of 2022, and it was an additional $55,000 being added to the project, total project cost for the master site planning that planning had come to you requesting. Subsequent to that, on March 8th, we found undisclosed issues in the school permitting issues, code violations above ceiling. Obviously, Ms. Gittens has gone through and seen how far we've taken the school down, walls, ceilings. So we're requiring another $949,000, I believe, to support, $949,415 and 11 cents to support, it roughly equates to 8% increase over the original construction costs, which is not typical in a renovation project.
So if I may, Madam Chair?
Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm going to let Ms. -- because this was her question, then I'm going to come back to you.
No, let her go.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Well, in the statement to the media last week, it was stated that an additional 12 million was being asked for and I--
I can't speak to the long-term potential addition buildings, whether it be for pre-K or kindergarten and the other side. I'm specifically asking for money for the VPAA, the old Lambs building renovation.
Right. No, but that's what it said it was for. But anyway, that aside, it's not you. I sent an email, when was it, after we had that meeting on the 8th and I asked, I requested that we look at the VPAA as an overall project with three phases, one being the renovation of the old Lambs, two being the Performing Arts Center, and three that just came up was the renovation or changes that be needed for the VPAA K through 5. Now, those were the things I was aware of. And this, and maybe the superintendent can address this because it mentioned four phases. This, this is where I go back to our last discussion about planning, that if we sat down and said, "What will we need to bring VPAA to the point where we can revise the old building and add the Performing Arts Center?" It's like things just keep coming up rather than, "Can't we just sit down?" I'm not against the changes. But can't we just sit down and say, "Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, which order will they go in? How much is it going to cost us?"
Well, just so you're aware, Phase 1 is always the design phase. We've already been through that and we're currently finishing up the design phase. That's why you see 2A.
But I mean, phases for each section. Maybe not phase, but probably some--
Your plan is being managed. That's why planning came back and asked for the $55,000 so that they can engage in a site master plan. That would encompass everything that we're doing. Now, this particular ask is for unforeseen construction deficiencies in the old Lambs building that I need to get the work done now, engaged, to have it ready for opening. There is a grand master plan and I believe the PO has already been cut and they're already working on that, which is something they'll have to present to you, meaning the planning department, in terms of the overall development and master plan concept of that whole campus. I'm still designing the theater building. Those drawings are just about done and getting ready to go out to bid. It doesn't mean we're going to move forward with it at this point until obviously this master plan is brought forth to you guys, which will show all those other pieces of the puzzle that you're hearing rumors about.
Well, and the piece to revive or change the front building, the K through 5, because you're moving, what, 850 middle schoolers out of that building into the other building, whatever the number, we won't go over that. But that means something has to be done in that front building.
Well, what I can tell you, what I think will happen, is once I'm done with the renovation, I'm sitting in an easy chair until the master plan gets vetted and brought forward to you. Academics has a chance to look at it, planning, you folks as a board, the superintendent that'll be sitting. When you tell me to take that next step, if you approve it and you fund it, then we'll go to that next step. So right now, I'm creating drawings for the theater. That's it. I'm opening up the old Lambs building for those seats, 1,000 seats, and that's it. Then the master plan will then have to be brought forward to you to describe that vision for that entire campus. And then it's your call whether you move forward or not.
Now, with the revision, when you take students out of that front building and put them in the back, that leaves a void of classes.
Again, on construction, I'm not numbers, I'm not student capacity, I'm not planning.
No, 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 but I'm just asking you, don't we have to do something? And wouldn't that have to be done before school opens in this spring again?
Again, I had X number of seats that got mothballed for a year and I had to update that school. In terms of the numbers, I was told recreate 1,035 seats. I will recreate 1,035 seats. How the academics and the student assignment make that transition--
I know that's not you. And my last statement is, yes, I have been in there several times and I have seen it. The statement that it was taken all the way down to the studs in some areas, yes, but not overall.
Agreed.
I worked in that building, I taught in that building and I know that things were changed and things were fixed. And the last time I was there, there was, they were showing me how it's like you paint over a wall 65 times and you go to take it down and realize there's 10 layers of paint. So then you have to do something else. So I totally agree, whatever, and I have said since the very beginning, whatever you need to do to fix that school so that it is up to par with every other school in this district, that's fine. But that should be the focus right now, getting that school back up to--
Can I ask for one bone?
Uh-uh.
Originally, this school was a $4 million, slapped some paint and some carpet.
Exactly, and I thought it--
When your last visit, would you say it's still a $4 million slap, paint and carpet?
Oh, no, 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 no. I've been in there several times.
It's substantial what we've done there and I think you're all going to be very impressed.
It is, and, but I want to know the actual numbers because I'm hearing, you know, eight, I'm hearing 12 million, I'm hearing this.
If you'll go ahead and wrap yours up, please.
I'm wrapped up.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
So how old is this school?
1986, '87, something like that.
Okay.
I'm just having a little hard time because, I mean, we've got schools older than that that's not went through any of this. So is it the quality of construction that happened then, you know?
In your attachments, you'll see the breakout sheet and you'll see one sheet with about 50 items on it. The stuff that's highlighted in yellow are things that I have to attack and get done now. For instance, we remove in the cafeteria, we remove the fabric panels. They're framed up with wood. SREF doesn't allow combustibles wood there. So now that I was getting ready to put new panels up to match the school theme, I've got to get rid of that. We have electrical systems, some of the electrical systems are wired a certain way, which may have meant code back in the day. It no longer is. The minute you touch it, you have to update it. The PVC piping, although it works, is brittle. And we're creating all these new science labs. So these are things that you can't see when you go in there and you do a walk with the subs, you do a general concept of what your work plan is, you open the ceilings up-- you do a general concept of what your work plan is, you open the ceilings up, and things get exposed. And that is what this additional funding is doing, getting us to that point where things are corrected, rather than burying it.
Okay, but my only concern is that we didn't, we kind of should have, I still feel we should have identified some of this stuff beforehand.
There's, there's a lot you can't. Again, the ceilings have to come down. You would, you would have to go through a demo process to even expose half of these items. And there, there is no one that does that until you engage in a contract.
Well, and I understand that, but I still think, I mean, this started January, then March, and then the Januaries, like we had to rush it till we'd be done by August. Are we going to meet that August deadline now?
You're not going to beat it, but you will meet it, yes. Yes, this is all being done, and we've already started some of those items in yellow using the project contingency. And when you see the breakout sheet, what we've done is we bled down project contingency. We had other items to the tune of $357,000 of work that we in buyout savings. Means we didn't have to pay for it, but we're repurposing that towards this ask. The original value was $1.5 billion in work to repair all these deficiencies. So we bled out the project contingency, we've taken the savings and reinjected them in to bring it down to a value of $917,000. And third, now I have to pay them fee. Now, understand, I still have an owner's contingency that'll carry me through to the day. So if there's anything that pops up, it's about $400,000, that should cover those items hopefully till we get to the end.
Okay, thank you. So that was where I was going to go with that, because, so, you know, I do real estate. So people buy an old house and it becomes a money pit. And, you know, and that's kind of the situation here, I think. But, I mean, the, the school is not that old, and that is my only concern. If I didn't have faith in the contractor that's presently doing the work, then I would question it a little bit more. But I feel confident that the contractor you have in place is doing the best that, with, when, when things arise. So, um, so I understand that. I just, my concern is that I'm, I'm thinking, I'm being proactive and thinking ahead, because there's more schools that we're going to have to do this.
Oh, and I am too. I will have a 20% contingency in that GMP. Now, if we don't spend it, it comes back to the board. But for this very reason, and what we're seeing in the old schools, I've just completed all my historical building, structural studies, and I'll be bringing that forward to you in a workshop. And there's a lot of things that happened over the years. A lot of skill, it's a lot of things. So, yes, there will be a greater contingency so that we don't have to keep coming back to the board for these unforeseen conditions. There's a lot of things that may have been code-worthy in the day that when you open it up and you touch it, you have to meet current code, that just don't meet it.
So, and that's where I'm going, is that I think we, we were kind of surprised since we just voted on this March 8th, and now this is March 18th?
I literally, I literally got that sheet on the 8th.
So, yeah, so that is my concern. I just want to, I, I want to look ahead and be proactive, proactive instead of reactive. And that's what I feel like we're a little reactive. In fact, we're, this district is a lot of reactive, and I'd love to get ahead of that. So, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, ladies, gentlemen, jury, we are 45 minutes over for that, that one item. So moving on to the, thank you, Dr. Savage. So moving on to the next item, which is the recommendation of HR and Beyond, discussion of future whistleblower complaints. And Ms. DePree Bruno and I will walk you through this. Okay, so we do have, regarding the investigations, this is just for us to have conversations. We know that HR Beyond had done the, all the investigations, and I don't know if you want to, and you all have the backup for there, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, 10, 10, 11 cases that we had and that they went through, and they put their recommendations on there. Do you want me to go over each one of these, or how would you like to handle this? Ms. Vaughn?
I don't know that it's necessary to go through each one of them, but I know at one point I did ask for the total amount of money expended with HR and Beyond and to remind me and to put it out to the public, I would like that figure.
Okay. And Ms. DePree Bruno, was that like 37?
$37,000 for HR and Beyond to complete all of the investigations.
And then remember, the investigations were items that had come to us because of constituents and lighthouse and all the different determinations. And as a board, we agreed to have them all investigated by an outside source to get it over with once and for all, and to be finished with, with this.
And plus, there was Mr. John Quick's-
$46,000 for conflict counsel.
Yes, $46,000. Yes, so now the $46,000 meets with the conflict, as Mr. DePree Bruno just stated, is due to the fact that in some of these, like, some of these investigations, as long as her name is listed on there, it puts us in conflict, which means that she cannot take care of this or work on any of these issues. So we had no choice but to put this out to our conflict attorney.
I, I realize that, and I remember us voting on it, but I just want to put it out there to the public. And I did get this number a while back, but I didn't have it right at my fingertip. So that, if I add correctly, $83,000.
That is correct.
That we spent on this.
Correct.
And I'm just going to add. People may want to go through one or the other of these, but it's, I, I know at least the one that had pointed a finger at me had, ridiculous that it was even brought up, so I, but I'm going to shut up now, because-
Well, everybody, we did ask Ms. Morgan to go ahead and compile this for us earlier. And so she did compile all of those, the recommendations, the investigations, recommendation action, the findings, and the notes, which were, the notes that she had taken and put together for us. So that was, that was done by her, and that was sent out, everybody had that.
You know, what date was that though?
And that was-
I think that was in September sometime.
Yeah, back in September. We can send that back out to you all.
That would be great.
And then, um,
Just for the board's recollection, this was with regards to one of the nine on the governance team sharing a text message was the primary issue. And then there was another retaliation complaint related to that, as well as, I believe this was during the time as well, that board members were receiving lighthouse complaints. So there are a couple of others that are part of that as well.
And Ms. DePree Bruno, will you say, based on this as well, and what I'm sending to all of you, is the-
There were some recommendations by H&R and Beyond in terms of recommended actions, as well as the findings. And just in some, the, for the most part, all of these were not substantiated.
You should have that. And in the process, because of all of this, we did come, we have created the process document, document, which is attached to this as well. So you will have the process document that we will be using for, to handle all the whistleblower, lighthouse, OIG, et cetera complaints. And that was created to make sure that we took care of that, and that was done on 1/22, 1/22/22. And that just goes through all the, the description of how that will follow through. And of course, the process documentation is how it works, is the background of how it works. Ms. Jivannelli?
So, a couple of questions that I have, like, so one of the investigations was regarding H, H&R, HR Department. So do they get, do, do these investigators ask for emails, to, to look at emails, or do they? How does that, how was their process? What?
So specifically with regards to H&R and Beyond, she, the investigator, came here multiple times, interviewed and met with individuals, various witnesses, reviewed all kinds of documentations. That's normally what the process is, is to speak to witnesses and review any documentary evidence or documents that may be related.
Okay, so I actually have documents that was related to that complaint, but apparently didn't, it wasn't requested, or, you know, copies of the emails. So making her, making her investigation not really factual.
I'm not sure which particular investigation you're referring to, but normally-
Well, regarding the HR director.
The HR director?
Yeah.
Okay, so normally, normally what happens within an investigation, the investigator gets a cursory, like the complaint, the lighthouse complaint, a cursory information of what the charges or what the allegations are. From there, they start saying, okay, I want to talk to this person, that person, this person. And then a lot of times, people will say, well, you also need to talk to this person and that person. And so it kind of snowballs, and you get a full gambit of what happened. I can't talk about the particular process in terms of who, you know, she spoke to, because I was not involved in that investigation in any way whatsoever, but that's normally what happens. So if, if, you know, if it was not advised that, you know, you had particular information, then she may not have known that you had information.
I don't think this, well, this information I just recently received, so, but, but wouldn't they, wouldn't they request emails? If there was any emails for that, in that timeframe, that she's investigation, that the allegations were made? Wouldn't they do that?
They, she, depending on what the investigator's looking at and the scope of the investigation, the investigator may not have requested a particular whole run-through of emails to comb through, but may be very targeted based on the information that witnesses are giving and based on the documents that are provided.
Okay, so if I have this document that, that, that is relevant and actually very factual, that does place the HR director involved, what happens now? Because the, the outcome of the, her investigation is totally not the facts.
So it will be up to the board as to whether or not they want this investigation to be reopened so that, that additional documentation can be considered.
Okay.
And which, and then there's the investigation, investigation numbers as well.
Well, those are, the ones on the chart are the lighthouse numbers. And I believe that on the reports is the actual HR and Beyond numbers. So in your backup material, 072821, will be everything related to that particular investigation that I believe that Ms. Jivannelli is speaking to, speaking about. And I also know that if, if the investigator is reaching out to individuals and they do not want to participate or they do not respond, there's nothing that the investigator can do, because it's all voluntary. Whoever wants to provide information is welcome to provide information. I do know that some individuals did not want to participate or cooperate in the investigation.
And that could be the case too, again. Thank you.
Yeah, I did hear that as well. They did notify us of that. So again, as far as going through this, I mean, if you look at it, the findings, we have one that's, you know, no further action needed. We have not substantial, not substantial, not sustaining.
Substantiated.
Substantiated, thank you. I'm not sure what I'm reading here. Not substantiated, not substantiated, not substantiated, not substantiated, partially. And then, and then the partially one noted that, that in the event anonymous complaint is, able to provide new evidence for consideration, the complaint should be revisited. But with an anonymous complaint, there's, it's hard for them to know who to contact because they don't know who this person is. So it's, that, that's an issue there. And then we had another one that was partially as well. Ms. Jivannelli?
So back to, and I'm sorry, back to my question, though. So like, if we haven't, we, we have, if I have some particular information that substantiates that an employee was involved, which it says not substantiated, because she's saying, because their findings was, there was no evidence, but I have evidence otherwise. I actually have it right here. So where the employee was involved with the vendor, and meeting with the vendor during this time, then, um-
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Jivannelli, meeting with a vendor?
Uh-huh. Well, that was on the, I'll tell you which one, because this is the one that I'm actually was involved in. The lighthouse complaint, 2000044618, which I think is the second to the last one on our list.
Number nine. What is it? It looks like it's nine.
And the very first allegation happens to have the employee, that I have emails where they met with them, they spoke with them, and it was also, also while an investigation was ongoing.
So that is something for the, because you were named in that particular-
I, I was.
So that is something that the board needs to consider, whether or not to reopen and send this to H&R and Beyond so that a review can be conducted? It's up to, it's to decision-
My concern is the fact that we had an employee involved in this. And that's my concern for future issues that arise where employees involved. You know, what, you know, what are we going to do? I think that's really the issue. And I can get copies to everybody. I, it's not via email. It's copies of emails where the HR director was directly meeting with and corresponding with the vendor that was under investigation. That, obviously, the investigator at H&R Beyond did not.
I have, Ms. Jivannelli, can I see this?
You sure may.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Um, I know that I was named in one, but it doesn't note that here. Do we know?
These are only the ones that we had, specific ones that we had brought before the board.
To H&R and Beyond, and the one with my name on it was one of them.
Oh.
And that's why I'm wondering, which one is it here? Because others' names are mentioned, but mine was not.
Okay.
I don't know which one.
I know all of them. We did not do every single complaint that we had. Ms. DePree Bruno?
So, just to clarify.
Please.
This, H&R and Beyond was the slew of investigations that came in from lighthouse last, I think it was March, after an incident had occurred about sharing text messages. Ms. Gittens is correct that there was one that was directed at her, which was unfounded, not substantiated. There was one directed at Ms. Vaughn. Pretty much all of them directed at all nine individuals on the governance team, one directed at me. So that's the one, all related to this text messages, except for two. One with regards to Ms. Gittens, and one with regards to a booster club issue that we requested be reviewed. Everything else is only about the sharing of the text message. That's the only thing that H&R and Beyond reviewed. So anything else that is, what Ms., what I saw from Ms. Jivannelli is not part of this H&R and Beyond investigation.
But was not-
Completely different.
I'm looking at-
Okay, so was I not, my situation not involved-
Yes.
In H&R and Beyond, I believe, looked at it?
Yes, they did. And I'll, I'll see if I can find that report for you, Ms. Gittens, but you are correct.
And I'm just wondering, because others are named and mine wasn't named, so.
I'll have to check on that one.
Yeah, I don't see it.
And if it's possible to, to individually get the information back about that so that I can keep it for my files, I would like to-
Yes, I know that when Mr. Quick was sending out all of the responses, he did send it to everybody. I will double-check, Ms. Gittens, to make sure that you have that particular one.
And, and thank you for saying that too, because once H&R was completed, our representative, our consultant, who was our, Mr. Quick, because he was our conflict attorney, he is the one who was handling this, and he was the one who reached out to contact those people that were mentioned on here to let them know about the, the case, how it was closed. That was his ending of that, of the completion. That was the closeout.
Correct.
But I know that this was asked to be brought up, you know, to be brought back so everybody could see. And that's why we have this here today, so that you all could, to see the outcomes of this. And that was the purpose of this whole report. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the specifics on how these even came to us on, on the board. And of course, I'm going to use my example, since I, in the past, asked a lot of questions and had some conversations about that with Mr. Quick. and had some conversations about that with Mr. Quick. Okay, so the allegation comes in, complaint comes in to Lighthouse, and it's my understanding, is this right, that there would be then an individual who would make the decision whether the allegations, whether this, the complaint was legally sufficient? Is that not true?
Yes.
So, so what was happening at that time?
That was not happening.
That's, well, I just want to go through the history.
At that time?
At that time, there were Lighthouse complaints, and they were going to HR. And then we started getting some complaints with regards to board members. And then this kind of trickled where the board was contacted, and then the board had a discussion about these particular complaints.
In, in my particular case, I recall that, I believe Brian Williams was still the staff attorney at that point. And my particular case, or complaint, I kind of had a bone to pick with him legally on that, because what the anonymous person said was hearsay. And my opinion is, that is not legally sufficient. She said, "I heard that," or "someone told me that it was Ms. Vaughn who shared the text message." Now, the interesting thing also about this HR analysis is, this complainant was also talking about something totally unrelated to who shared this text message. She was telling a story about harassment, that she and apparently a daughter, and, I mean, it's, it's come to bear that we, at least I know who this person is, and I know the specific story that was involved. But that was totally, totally, had nothing to do with this one complaint. And so the part that says finding partially substantiated, what the HR investigator substantiated was that the anonymous complainant did in fact receive harassment at some point, but there was nothing to connect me to that harassment. Now, that to me is muddied water. It makes no sense, because it started out as who shared that text message, which by the way, I'm going to say was a setup, because it was to find out which board members were being naughty, because that kind of email had never gone out before with a name on it. I recall going to a meeting, an executive session meeting, myself with a whole table of people. And when I brought that idea up, and I questioned some of the timing, because I was insulted that I was accused of that, of sharing the text message, which I didn't do, there was, there was some theater, let's say, in, in that room, where that, at that time, the person who had passed it along came to tears and was, well, I probably shouldn't share that she was good at that, that I was insulting her. But there's, let's face it, there was, this whole round, there was a whole lot more underneath it, and reasons and retaliations, but that's beside the point. I believe, at least, that, first of all, there was no legal sufficiency when it was a complainant with hearsay. Secondly, the waters were muddied, talking about harassment and then text message sharing. And in the investigation, my name's not even spelled correctly. My first name is misspelled throughout. So I have a problem with that, too. So those are my comments on it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Patrica?
I'm not sure the purpose of this was to rehash the facts of the investigations. I think that if I, if I'm understanding correctly, we should be going through the document compiled by Ms. Morgan in an attempt to determine how the board will conduct itself going forward, should future complaints come in. So can we start on that document and just sort of go through each one?
Ms. Fisher? Where is that document?
It was just re-mailed.
I emailed it to you.
Sorry.
I emailed it to you.
Okay.
All right. I emailed it to you with the process. I'm sorry, I thought you heard me say that.
So starting on four, I don't think more action needs to be taken there, because we've already done that, right?
Okay, just a second, please, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Gittens?
I, I think overall, we're looking at this process, and, and we need to keep in mind that now there have been changes. And thanks to Attorney Dupree Bruno and her and the legal team, they do have a process now that makes this a lot more feasible and workable than it was when it first began. We did not have the specific process, I believe, that we have now. The fact that it's going through the legal department first, to have first set of eyes as a group of attorneys, is this a legal issue? Is it a HR issue? Is it whatever? I think that's what we need to be looking at. This was something, this is the way it was handled before. We have changed, like I said, thanks to the attorney and her team. It is now being handled differently. So for time factor, going back and looking at all these, the process has changed. HR and Beyond has gone through all of these. We know the outcome of all of this. I say we move forward and, and just go forward.
Thank you. Ms. Dupree Bruno, and then Ms. G.
If I remember correctly, though, I think initially I thought it was supposed to go through our auditor. Now, did we change our policy once we didn't have an auditor? Or, you know, that, so there, and there was that long time where we didn't have an auditor, so was that where it went sideways, or, so?
Yes, could you?
So a couple of things. One, I agree with Ms. Gittens, the process has changed now, and I'll explain what the process is now. Second, you're correct, Ms. Givernelli. Originally, what was supposed to happen was that when we received Lighthouse complaints, no matter what kind of complaints, whistleblower complaints, they were supposed to be vetted by legal and the board auditor. And at that point, recommendations were to be made to send it out to wherever it was supposed to go. Then there was a discussion by the board that they did not, because of cost, I believe was the primary reason, not to have it go, everything go to the board auditor, and the board auditor would then only get referrals for waste, fraud, and abuse. Anything that dealt with ethics or anything else would go presumably to legal services. That did not occur. It continued to go to HR, and legal services would, once in a while, get something with regards to, there really wasn't any waste, fraud, abuse claims that were coming in. Thereafter, when this particular issue happened, where it was directed to the board, then that's when I, the school board attorney, was notified and advised that there were some allegations against board members. Thereafter that, we did not have our board auditor. All of this was a perfect storm, that all pretty much happened at the same time. We did not have a board auditor to assist. So at this point, we continue to get some Lighthouse referrals after the, these sets of Lighthouse referrals, and we try to address them as we possibly could address them. There were some that were pretty significant, that we, I discussed with the superintendent, and we decided what we were going to do with those, and then some that went to professional standards, or however it ended up happening. Now, the process, based on what has occurred, and this has been a, a process that has been ongoing, that has now been cleaned up, legal services, pretty much the board attorneys, are the ones who received the Lighthouse complaint, and we are now managing the Lighthouse Case Management System. That just occurred approximately three or four weeks ago. Once Ms. Supke was on board at the end of January, we started, you know, getting some more, some of the complaints. We met with HR, and gradually, there's been a transition between HR and legal to vet these Lighthouse complaints. And this is something that is done in other districts, that these would normally go to legal and then be referred out to where they need to go. So at this point, as we receive these complaints, the attorneys sit down, we review statute, we review policy, we discuss the facts to see if it's legally sufficient, and then forward them to where, whatever department it may need to go. For example, we can receive something that is very simple, that a principal just needs to know about this parent complaint. We can send it to our constituent services to discuss, or it could be sent to the principal, and they handle it. Or if it's an issue with regards to a school, we may send it to the executive directors for them to look at. And then it escalates, depending on the significance and the gravity of the allegations that are presented. So that's how we're handling it at this time.
And so that's making it cleaner as well?
It's much cleaner, and we take pursuant to the Department of Education's manual on investigations, which actually tells us that all complaints have to be reviewed and analyzed. That is what legal is doing at this time.
Ms. Fisher, you had a comment, and then I'm going to ask Ms., Ms. Morgan, because I know she put a lot of work into this.
Yes, first of all, I'm much more comfortable with this track, as far as what we're discussing here today, rather than, rather than rehashing the past. Is this the document, the process document, that describes what you just said?
Yes.
Okay, this is the new one.
So we have a clean process document.
You have a clean process document, a clean process.
And we have a new process that's being implemented as we speak.
Ms. Patrica, and I'm going to ask Ms. Morgan.
Just a quick question. It appears on the district website for Lighthouse complaints. This is only for employees, correct?
Employees are the ones who can get protection from retaliation. Anybody can call Lighthouse. Anyone can make a complaint.
I understand that, but the, the purpose of, of this, from a board's perspective, as I look at our policies, as I look at the purpose of this, the purpose was whistleblower protection for employees.
Correct.
And the public has other avenues outside the district that they can travel in order to file a complaint against the district, right?
The public does have other avenues that they can travel in order to file complaints against the district. The whistleblower hotline was designed for employees. However, the public, anybody really, can make that call. Anybody can turn in a complaint. It just depends on what that complaint is and how it's processed by legal.
But I, I think, but originally, in the very beginning of time, when we first created this Lighthouse, it was for employees, because that was the concern, that it was going to be utilized for everything. That was my concern. And, and it, actually, it has been. But it was, when we first came up with it, we wanted to get it activated, we wanted to make sure that employees had an avenue for them not, for those who may feel fearful to, to come out and say whatever they, was on their mind, it gave them an avenue to, to put in writing how they were feeling, without, you know, putting their names out there, or, you know, they just had another way to, to do this. But then again, we seen what happened with that, and then, because of that, then we had to go to outside counsel, then we had to go to a private entity to, to come back with these responds. And Ms. Morgan, I, can you, I know that you're here, and you put a lot of work into this. Do you have some comments that you'd like to make on this, please?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where the conversation is going.
Okay, the, regarding the, and I know that you had put on here about communication and purpose of Lighthouse, the Ethics Hotline is to provide an avenue for employees to raise concerns of ethical nature. Instead, it appears it's being used repeatedly for grievances by the public, which this is, things that we've already just stated. And I think that with what you, the words you have written and the process document, a lot of this has kind of cleaned itself up a little bit. Is that what you think, too, Ms. Dupree Bruno?
So, yeah, I think that it's been cleaned up, but let me draw the board's attention to Board Policy 5.331, which is the whistleblower protection. Remember, it's two things. One is the whistleblower, and the other thing is the retaliation. There's two things that go along with this. The retaliation is specifically to protect the employee. If the employee is coming out and saying that there's been some malfeasance, waste, fraud, and abuse, they cannot be retaliated against. But pursuant to our policy, the policy is to establish a procedure to provide employees with protection pursuant to the Florida Public Whistleblowers Act. That's Section 1. If you go down to the definition of whistleblower, which is on line 81 subsection F, the definition of a whistleblower means a person or entity making a protected disclosure. A whistleblower may be an employee, students, parents, vendors, contractors, applicants for employment, or the general public who makes a good faith report.
Can you repeat exactly where that is, which policy in the line?
331.
That's our whistleblower policy, 5.331.
And what line was that?
Which regards to...
Last part you just read.
I believe it's line 84. Let me just double-check, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you.
Starts at line 81.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, Ms., Mr. Dupree Bruno, in reading some of this, what Ms. Morgan, some of the notes that I'm reading here, where we're saying, for example, a standard could make it clear that allegations, complaints made against private citizens should not be made via the Lighthouse, and as, as such, would not be investigated or responded to by the district, as well as other standards, that dictates how duplicate complaints rising.
I do, I see that. So I, I understand the board's concerns. The, you have to walk this line very carefully. If the board wants to have a independent whistleblower hotline, we can't arbitrary and capriciously decide what we're going to look into. We have to look into anything that comes in, which is actually part of the DOE manual on investigations.
Okay.
You have to be very careful with that, picking and choosing.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Yes?
Do you have any comments in the, in what you have here?
No comments, other than what, you know, what's written and the conversation taking place, I think that...
Okay, thank you. So in looking at all of this, is there more conversations that you believe is needed, or is this process document that has been created, do you feel that that's going to eliminate some of these issues that we have? Ms. Gittens?
Just for posterity's sake, can we add the process document to this particular item in here?
In the policy.
So that if someone is looking and they see this topic on board docs, that they would have all the information right there? Maybe the policy and also the...
Well, this is a process document.
Right, but I'm saying the, the policy and the process document, so that everything is in one place if someone needs to...
So the board is about to embark on a transformation of your policies. So I, my recommendation is that we go through that process, and just in the short time that I've been in communication with the folks with Neola, there are so many good policies that I think will clean things up even further with relevant process documents. So I think let's go through that process and make sure that, you know, we have a broad spectrum. This will be brought to the board step by step, as we're going and revising the processes, and the board can have input as to what it would like to add and change.
Okay. And then would the board also want to have a list of what comes in through the Lighthouse?
So we can give, here's my hesitance. Specifics in terms of what's coming into Lighthouse, a lot of times, you know, sometimes you guys see what's coming in. Sometimes there were true, true whistleblower complaints... Sometimes there were true, true whistleblower complaints that are coming in. We need to protect whistleblower identity per statute and we need to protect the integrity of investigations. So I would not recommend that every single complaint that comes in be notified to the board. A general in terms of how many Lighthouse complaints are coming in with the subject matter, I think that's fine. Legal is actually using the Lighthouse system because it's a case management system that we actually go in and put the information in. We can provide you with updated reports on those. It also tells us how many cases are open, who they were sent to. We do updates every week on Lighthouse. So we will be more than happy to share that data with you. I think in August, legal will be doing a review in terms of the legal department and those types of things. We will include Lighthouse in that. And we should have more data by that time. Because please remember that we just started doing this. This transfer just occurred within the last, I think we started at the end of January and really the transfer of Lighthouse itself, which was a process to transfer, really didn't happen until about three weeks ago, approximately.
Okay. And then, Mr. Dupree Bruno, the, I see on here, the one with the human, HR and professional standards being involved in everyday-to-day investigation. And they may have preconceived opinions of parties involved in complaints based on prior engagement.
With the new process?
Yes.
It goes to legal first. And then depending on what the nature of the investigation, the attorneys discuss it and then make the referrals.
Ms. Javonelli?
So this was something that Dr. Savage brought up, is trying to remove special standards over to another department. Is that a conversation that we should have at this point regarding this? You know, because I think, my concern is, I mean, I, West Palm Beach has a well-old machine regarding this. They have their whole section and department that fell in its own department. They had investigators, they had everything and including a hotline number. And it was, it was very, it was very good. I mean, it really was. And that's something that we don't have. And I'm just curious because I think that was something that Dr. Savage was trying to do and not as involved or the depth of it, but an actual, but something similar, kinda, sorta, if that makes sense. I don't know.
Some districts do have their own inspector general's office. Some districts do have a separate entity that only handles these things, some of our larger sister districts. That's always a good idea to have as complete independence as you possibly can. This is what we have now based on the tools and the individuals that we have.
So maybe, Ms. Javonelli, you want to get that information and bring it back to us and share that with us? How's that sound?
Okay, it's really, it's easy because it's really right on West Palm's website, but I can do that. I actually shared it with HR when it, when, when we were doing the ethics and everything and, or no, the auditor, was regarding the auditor and how they're processed. Because that, the auditor fell underneath that as well, I believe, so.
And that could be a conversation that we have when Dr. Bernier comes in. But if you can bring that, get that information.
I will advise the board that it's always a good idea for these types of situations to be as independent and whatever office that's handling that, whatever, whoever has that function, to be insulated in order to ensure that there is integrity in the investigation and there is no concerns of retaliation, et cetera.
Ms. Vaughn?
I love what Ms. Dupree Bruno just said because it focuses on what I was about to say. It's, I'm really concerned about that, the whistleblower piece and the whole thing. Because, you know, sometimes people might debate this, but we are people. And there seems to be quite a network of information going on within the district and in the community. And somehow, people have gotten to be really frightened, our personnel really frightened of being a whistleblower, of coming up with anything that might be critical of their supervisors and people above them. So what you said about insulated and separate, I'm all for that because it's, it's, it's been huge. We have people, again, that, and there has been retaliation.
I think that's part of this one where it says, establish an internal practice where board notifications concerning active investigations only occur after the employee has been notified of the action being taken against them so that they are not hearing that from somebody else. That's exactly right. But I think, and that's going to be solved with this process.
We'll add a little bit on, I think it was Thursday, I believe, I sent the board some information with regards to work culture and work environment. It is extremely important. We learned this when we went to our employment labor class, legal class. And then again, Lighthouse sends us little tips here. It's extremely important that work culture is one where employees feel the ability to speak up. That in and of itself will help with lowering the legal exposure to the district and the claims and the cost. I mentioned before that Publix doesn't have a lot of cases, doesn't have a lot of claims in terms of employers. Employees complaining about anything with Publix, there are not a lot of them. It's because of their work culture and how they allow their employees to speak up and they feel protected. Little by little, as things improve in the district, you're going to have less and less of this. But we need to go through this, I think this is going to be a difficult start because, you know, we're taking this very, I know legal is taking this very seriously to do our part to make sure that we get on the right path in moving this forward.
Ms. Javonelli?
Oh, sorry.
If I may, just finish one, one thought. Often, the retaliation is extremely subtle. And things, things like there's no, you know, you're not fired, but your life on the job, the climate for you as a whistleblower exposed, so to speak, becomes hell on earth. And that, that's the part that is really probably the most difficult to monitor. But, and I'm not sure how we change that, that culture. But there is most definitely a culture of if you complain, in many cases, supervisor and perhaps even your coworkers give you a really hard time. And it's, again, it's nothing that you can say, well, that person didn't get that job because he or she was not qualified. But there, it's those subtle things that I worry about. And that really destroys the morale of our employees. And it, it speaks to what we are going through now as a district in the area of retention.
So if I may just say that from legal services, and I've been saying this ever since we had the new restructuring, that one of our goals is to be proactive. And another thing that we're doing is to make sure that a case comes in, no matter what type of case it is, we're not only looking at it from that particular instant, but also the life of it, how it's going to translate if it does get to a higher court. And that's part of it. For example, I know in HR, that's one of the things that Mr. Houdak is working on, not just looking at this particular instant at this point, but what's going to happen in the future and what's my legal exposure going to be in the future? Connecting those dots where you had the prior model with the staff attorney concentrating just on what, representing the staff's interest in these HR cases to what happens at the end when it gets to the board attorney's office, which is now dealing with the federal case. So what we're trying to do is have this longevity from the beginning to the end to try to reduce our exposure. And that will also have an impact in our work culture and hopefully in our risk management and loss mitigation.
Great. Ms. Javonelli?
And so I have to piggyback off of what Ms. Vaughn just said because I can give you a clear example. And this person wasn't a whistleblower, but recently there was, this has to do with Dr. Savage, I would, this actually was going to come directly to you, where someone sent me an actual picture of the, of food, a lunch. And I only sent it to two people, and that was you and Dr. Bernier. And then all of a sudden, this showed up, that very picture showed up on Facebook and I flipped out because I was very concerned over that. And I went back to my source and said, did you share this one with more than one person? And then they said, yes. So that explained that because someone that they had shared it with had shared it. And so my, that's really not, I mean, it's gonna, that's gonna happen when we have children involved. But the lunch, and this was where the bag of limes, it was a bag of limes that was served at a school.
Bag of what? Oh, the limes.
A bag of limes, yes. So my concern was, when I went back to that, that source and asked them that, they proceeded to tell me that staff, and I won't, because she didn't say who, went actually back and looked at videos to see who took the actual picture. That is my concern over the fact that they would spend time looking to see who shared a picture of a bag of limes, then actually addressing the food issue and that the bag of limes was served to children to eat. Because I, they didn't serve them a margarita to go with it. So I was a little concerned. I mean, so, I mean, that's where the culture has to change. And it starts in the schools. And it rolls down from here. So I just, I was so concerned over that because, and that person said, I'm going to do what's right for kids. And, but they should not have had to even worry that someone was going to look and see who took a picture of food that was inappropriate, it was clearly inappropriate for students to eat that day. And this wasn't the first time at this school. So it concerns me.
But then again, that goes back to Ms. Vaughn saying people should not be worried about speaking up. So if someone felt that that was wrong, they should have felt confident enough and felt it was okay for them to go to their, the hierarchy, however that looks, and say, say something about whatever that may be. And people should be able to do that without any type of fear. So hopefully this, you know, with the process and everything and the culture, as Ms. Dupree Bruno just said, we do make that change because nobody should. You should come to work and enjoy what you're doing and feel that everything is safe and you can do your job. And I know we just went off that just one, off the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But I, but I think it's important to know that it still hasn't changed. We have these, we have this policy and it has not changed. And we've had the policy for quite some time. In fact, it was, you know, it's had to be tweaked and that's because of staff. So at what point is there accountability? You know, people had to be held accountable for their actions.
Ms. Fisher?
I really, I'm listening to Mrs. Javonelli and heard some of the other comments. And, and yes, we have the policy. It's like, you know, does everyone know what it is? And then again, who is accountable? And are we holding our, the right people accountable? And I think that that's something that needs to be looked at. And we are a school district, not a district of individual schools, even though there are differences. And so when we have a policy, it has to apply to everybody. And there are no exceptions, so.
Okay, so moving on, Mr. Dupree Bruno, is there any other?
The only thing that as we continue on with this new process, we do ask the board, all seven board members, support to ensure that we're, as legal team, can do our jobs and do the appropriate steps that are necessary to move these things forward.
Okay. Any...
Sorry. But she brings up a, a, a good point. We need to know how it's working. So we need to know when it's not working. And we need to know sooner than later. So it's vital because it's back to that accountability piece. We have to figure out why it's not working and correct it. And we need to be proactive instead of reactive, like you mentioned. And so it's, it's vital that you come back to us and tell us, hey, there's still some things that need to be tweaked here. We were, we're still having issues. Or this new process is working great. Because like you said, it's only been three weeks. And so unfortunately, the policy's been in place for a very long time. And, and now we're only three weeks into really working. And we've had it for a long time. So that's my concern that, and so we don't get, go down the road that we went with these investigations that really were sideways.
Yeah, so we have to remember why the policy was not working or, or if it was not working and how it was being implemented. So now we have the cooperation of staff to allow it and to, and now we have a fully, full legal office. We're fully staffed now to allow us to move forward with this too. So as one board attorney, if you was just one board attorney with another office of, you know, attorneys, that's not always the easiest situation to be in. So now that we are completely unified and we're a legal team and we are working together, I think that we will be able to address those things. And then HR has been cooperating, professional standards has been cooperating. So I think there is a different outlook in terms of how these things, and plus the superintendent has been supportive.
And then Ms. Dupree Bruno, if there is a, if we're conflicted out, we already have that third party that we would send that information to, correct? And that would be?
Yes. Mr. Quick, and so, and it's really important that people understand that pursuant to my ethical obligations, if a complaint is brought up against me, no matter how minor that complaint is, I will not, because I will make sure that I always operate from an ethical standpoint, investigate myself. Second, which is extremely important, so that means that we're going to have to use conflict counsel. And second of all, I will not ignore a complaint that comes in about me because I will not, and my legal team will not be arbitrary and capricious in terms of how we pick and choose what we're going to look into. So if something comes in about me, it's going to go to conflict counsel. So I want everybody to understand that because I will not investigate myself.
And I really appreciate Ms. Morgan taking the time to lay all this out as well. That was, I think, was very useful. Are there any other comments on this particular issue? Ms. Morgan?
Just let me say that it is as difficult for me to understand you as it is for you to understand me. But that's why I'm not very responsive. The, no, it's really poor.
On it because you sound like a robot. So we definitely, that is something that we have to look at.
Do you want me to have Ms. Morgan on my phone?
Ms. Morgan, would you like for Mr. Dupree Bruno to call you on her phone so that way it may be a clearer?
Oh, that would be, yes.
Okay, so she's going to call you on her phone, okay?
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Because we're moving on to the next subject. Can we take a break? Okay, so let's take a...
She was giving...
Four-minute break.
So let's take the extra one.
Four minutes, four minutes. The time is now 2:50 and we are resuming our meeting. The next agenda item is the board attorney evaluation. And Ms. Cindy McClung is here to assist us on this today.
Can you hear okay?
Ms. McClung, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Savage, Attorney DePree Bruno. Very nice to be here with you this afternoon.
May I interrupt super quickly?
Of course.
You all know I have a hard stop at 4 o'clock, which means like 3:58. I have to leave because I have to be on the phone at 4. So I just want to throw that out there.
It's Monday, it's Monday.
I know. It's not every Monday, but it is this Monday.
And we have Ms. Morgans online with us, is that correct? Ms. Morgan, can you hear us better?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to tell my colleagues before we got too deeply into this.
Can Ms. Morgan hear us?
Ms. Morgan, can you hear?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. We hear you much better too. Much better. Thank you, Ms. McClung.
Thank you. And actually, I have a hard stop at 4:15. I need to be on a Zoom for an accreditation review at 4:30. So we should be zooming right through. So in accordance with Attorney DePree Bruno's contract, she has an evaluation that needs to be completed by the board no later than April 15th. Also in accordance with her contract, this is the second year of a two-year contract. So a decision needs to be made by April 15th. If the board takes no action, it is automatically renewed for an additional two years. So those are the things to, to know as we move forward. So we're just going to go through the standards. I have the items listed for each standards to just kind of form your discussion. And then you can talk about any next steps that you would like to take for each area. So we'll begin with standard one, which is board performance. The board attorney serves as general counsel and advocate for the school board. And you can see the items that are included in that area. And so now I'll open it for any comments or discussion in the area of board performance.
Anyone? Ms. Patrica?
This is really the only area where I had, wanted to make a, an oral comment. As I reviewed my colleagues' comments in their reviews or their evaluations, I noticed that a lot of them focused on me. I will say that, you know, I do have a law degree. And it might make sense that if a legal issue became apparent to me, that it might become apparent to me more than anyone else because that's my background. Kind of like with education issues, I would, I would really focus on Ms. Vaughn. Mental health issues, I would really focus on Ms. Fisher and so on. So, you know, I'm, I'm in a tough position here. I have been accused by my colleagues and by the board attorney and by the superintendent of sabotage and bullying. And, you know, I get that everybody doesn't like my style. But it is my responsibility to provide oversight for the board attorney and the superintendent. So what I have tried to do is rather than provide oral corrections at the table, I get up and I whisper in the board attorney's ear. Or I pass a note to the superintendent so that I can't be accused of, of pointing out a weakness in public and out loud. I try to do it in a more quiet way, but clearly that doesn't sit well with my colleagues. So I guess I'm asking, how would you like me to handle it? I, I've been told by the board attorney, if you have a legal question during a meeting, ask for a recess. I've done that, the board didn't like that. So now I get up and I ask a question quietly so as to not, again, public, publicly bring to everyone's attention a mistake that was made. I do it quietly. My colleagues don't like that. How would you like me to provide oversight and not be accused of being a bully or sabotage at the same time? Thank you. It's my question.
Ms. Gittens?
If I may answer, I think it's the, it's the perception of getting up during the meeting and having, you know, private consultations. I understand and I get it that we each have the opportunity to speak to the attorney about things that we consider, you know, private. But I think in answer to your question, you started out saying that you do have a law degree and we understand that. And so there are things that you're going to understand that maybe we don't to that depth. And perhaps if it's worded more of a question or some type of observation, it would help all of us to understand something that we may not have noticed. And I believe that's what the iron sharpens iron is all about. If you know something legally that I, I don't know, I don't have a law degree. But if it's stated, and I think it's just a matter of how it's stated, Ms. Patrica, as not accusatory but informational, that have we considered this or have we considered that? And it's just the way it can be presented so that we can all learn from it or be corrected from it as well.
Okay, so if I could respond, I, I have tried that. I have tried to be, you know, take the Chris out of it. And, and I'm still offensive and I'm still accused of bullying. So that's, respectfully, that's not gonna work. Would you like me to send an email to the entire board and somebody else can read it out loud? Like, how would you like me to, to provide oversight in a way that doesn't hurt other people's feelings? Because I don't know how to do that. I am who I am.
Well, okay.
And if a mistake occurs, I, I can't vote on an item that's wrong. But at the same time, when I bring it up out loud at the table and point it out, I'm a bully.
Okay, so let's, let's.
Let's take you out of the equation.
Cut. Okay, so we're gonna remove you out of the equation right now because the, and I, I understand what you're saying as far as.
Did you read the reviews?
Comments, yes. However, and I, and I think that a lot of this, Ms. McClung, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, not trying to take over you. But we have, in focusing on all of these standards, I think the one that, going forward, because I had some real difficulties with this, with this. And I know we were going to try to redo this and we spoke about that 360 multiple times. And I, I think that that's something that really, really has to be looked at to give a fair and accurate opinion. Because we should not be putting anybody's name on anything that, this is just my opinion, that has to do with any of us on this board because it's not about the board members. We are trying to share information with our board attorney and that should not be weighing in on that. So, Ms. Patrica, I think, if you have a question, ask your question. Just ask it.
And you'll have my back when I get to.
Yes, ask your question.
Okay.
That's, I had to extend that a little bit, but.
And just to be clear, I do expect perfection. I do expect perfection from the board attorney and from legal staff when it comes to documents that are placed on the agenda for public consumption. And I might be a terrible, horrible person for expecting that, but, but it should be reviewed. And for a $2 billion corporation to have any kind of typo in anything that's placed up there, to me, it just, it sends the wrong message. So I have been accused of expecting perfection and 100% I expect perfection when it comes to that. But that's really all the comments that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
So if your issue is a typo, can you hold it till later? Because that can always be corrected.
I always do that at the end, but it is part of my annual evaluation. If I'm constantly making changes to documents that are placed in the board agenda or that are sent to us for review, if I'm, if I'm reviewing those, like I'm correcting a document that was submitted to me as a legal research and writing professor, that's part of my annual review.
I don't think she's doing a sidebar for corrections.
No, I'm not doing a sidebar for that. I am absolutely not doing sidebars for typos.
Yeah.
But, but if, if something is placed on an agenda that, that doesn't meet the requirements, for example, of rulemaking, the statutory requirements of rulemaking for the state of Florida, if it's placed on the agenda for us to vote on and those rules haven't been met, if I say it out loud that that mistake has been made, I'm a bully. Instead, I get up and I whisper it quietly, please check your text message so that I'm not saying it out loud and I'm not a bully. And then I get accused of monopolizing the board attorney. Like, I'm, I'm, like, what do, what do I do? How do I point out that a mistake was made and that we don't go down the wrong road legally? Do you understand what I'm saying?
But, but that's not your job as a board member. You're not the legal department, even though you have a law degree. It's kind of like Kathleen telling someone in business services, you know, because she has that expertise. I don't, I think you can hold it till after the meeting because corrections can be made.
No, 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 no.
All right, then you can ask to table it. I, I mean, I, you know, I'm just trying to keep it professional and.
You know that if I ask to table it, it'll blow up. But I can try that.
Okay, was there anyone else for standard one? Comments? Ms. Morgan, did you have anything for?
I think, I think Debbie, you started out by saying something good. And that was, take Chris out of it. If there is concern at the board table about how a matter is being brought forward by anybody, by the, by the board attorney, by the superintendent, and we have not had the opportunity to address it except at the board table, and it will ultimately be perceived as a criticism because the question is, you know, have we done our work? And it, does this, does this pass, you know, the test for a quality product for the board to vote on? There, that's, it's a legitimate question. How do you want board members to handle it gen, generally?
Yeah, thank you. And then as far as the, Ms. McClung, so are you looking at any other comments regarding any of these?
Any of these items. Ms. Patrica's comment was specifically around 1.01 because there were comments made on the evaluation of favoring board members. So I believe that's where that was addressed. But any of these items are all around board performance.
Thank you. Ladies, is there any other comments on this? You could move to two.
We'll move on to the next item, which is stakeholder performance. The overall description is that the board attorney provides ancillary legal support to the superintendent and district staff, especially in the arena of education law, and communicates legal concepts to all district stakeholders. And then you can see there are five items related to that. So any comments around stakeholder performance?
And I'm gonna go back to 107, sorry. With having Neola now, I think that's gonna be a, a good thing for us now. So those will come a lot quicker than we've had to before as one person. So I think that this is, that's gonna help with that as well.
And if I, if I may comment on that, I know we had talked about Neola a lot previously. So it is to the, the credit of the attorney for pushing to get us to move towards Neola and doing that background information because we hadn't moved forward with it before.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens.
If I could just, please. If I recall correctly, it was Ms. Morgan that brought forward the Neola thing.
She did. Okay. Ms. Morgan, do it.
I'm saying the follow-up on it, but yes, anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments on standard one?
No, sorry.
That's fine, thank you. Okay, back to standard two. Bless you. So any comments around stakeholder performance? Ms. Patrica?
Just when necessary, communicates legal concepts to the public. Attorney DePree Bruno and I have had this conversation in private. It, I begged and begged and begged our previous board attorney, what was his attorney? The guy that was here forever? Keith Martin, Attorney Martin. I begged and begged and begged him to stop doing the school board legal minute. And so when Attorney DePree Bruno suggested that she was gonna bring it back, I begged her not to. And the first one that we had was kind of a description of sort of the founding documents of the United States of America. I just, I personally think that it is not something that the board sort of requires. And when I have offered her that criticism, she has said, well, you.
And when I have offered her that criticism, she has said, well, you, there are seven of you, so I open it up to the board for. Do you guys want to hear about the Declaration of Independence? One more.
Let me, let me just clarify one thing before we get into the law, because there's been confusion in terms of what is law? Is it statute? Is it rules? Is it case law? Is it this? Is it that? So we had one foundational discussion so that we can have the foundation of what is law. But there are things that I feel need to be brought to the board's attention, such as the sunshine law, such as the cases that go along with that, because there's a lot of confusion in terms of what sunshine is, what the board members are able and not able to do. So I have an obligation to advise you and advise all of you at the same time on the dais is very important. And also, the public needs to understand some of these legal parameters as well. But I will take my direction from the board as to what you would like me to do in terms of those, those legal minutes, if you will.
So can I suggest that we get like a white paper? We read it and then if we don't need that, we don't have to read it or?
I think that with the sunshine, like the, with the sunshine, I thought that was really good, only because of the fact that when you have people that are looking at us and I look at Chris, all of a sudden, I'm talking to Chris. We're having a conversation. We're doing this, we're doing that. There's nobody here, so I can't be speaking to this person. But because of that, and I think a lot of times we have to clarify what exactly does that mean? And we are people, so we can speak, how are your grandkids? How are your daughter? We can speak to one another without violation. So I think in sharing that information, I think that is, it is helpful to, as a reminder to us, as well as to the public. Ms. Kittens?
Okay, maybe I'm just confused. Asking Ms. Patrica, what are you talking about removing? I mean, are you talking about when, you know, repeating things like when the public is getting ready to speak and we have to say that? What are you, I'm confused.
Ms. Patrica?
As to what you're talking about taking out.
So when the board attorney stands up and goes over there and gives a legal presentation about some general legal topic during a board meeting, that's, that's what I'm asking to be eliminated. And if the topic is that important, then perhaps it'd be put in writing and we'd be responsible for consuming it ourselves.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn? I know you're thinking about that, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah. A lot of what we say, and sometimes we even preface what we say with, just for clarification for those who are in the audience or watching at home. And honestly, I'm a little bit confused because I guess those intrusions or, you know, what I want to call, have not, not been obnoxious or, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with it. And I think if we have some things that help the general public, and I know I've asked questions now and then, I'll say, what's the, I don't know, there was, there was a word, we were going over what we were tasked to do, Ms. Dupree Bruno and I. And we'll be coming back to the board on recommendations on, how would you put it, Ms. Dupree Bruno? Because we came up with three different things, the Neola and the.
Oh, recommendations. So it's, it will be a policy discussion, a process discussion.
Yeah, on board attorney, that sort of thing. And I, and I remember asking her, which I'm sure Ms. Patrica, it'd be something easy for you. I mean, I know with the word sue, S-U-E, suing somebody, I know what that means. But I said, okay, is that a generic term that people use or is that something legal? And she took a minute to explain to me. And it's, you know, little things, seems like a little thing, but, but they're words that we use and we understand and, and they, you know, come up in some of our discussions here at the board table. And I'm guessing that some of the words are, you know, pretty generic words and others are words that appear in legal documents and have very specific legal meanings. So I, I don't have a problem with it.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and I think sometimes it's necessary for the understanding of all of us on the board and, and the ability for us to hear it all at the same time, on number one. Then for the assistance in, in education and the understanding from the audience. So I, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the legal minute. And then there have been times when perhaps something has been shared that might have been statute and another time it might have been case law. And usually Attorney Dupree Bruno takes the time to clarify that. And I find it helpful, but I don't have a law degree. So I can see where, you know, your tolerance for that or your opinion of that might be a little different. But I think sometimes it's necessary.
Ms. G.
And I would agree, actually, for me, it's clarity. And that's really what we're trying to do here. And I think it's important that things are clarified. And I don't have a legal background either that it's going to pertain to that or that she's going to research something and tell us that quickly. And it's, and it's for the community, it's for the public to understand as well. And, and even when sometimes she still says it, and we've had briefings on it, the public still doesn't quite get it. So I think the more time we say something or she says something, eventually we get it or somebody will. And I, so I doesn't, I don't think it hurts at all.
Thank you, Ms. G. Ms. Kittens?
Well, I was, I was just going to say perhaps, I don't know how the attorney goes about choosing which things she's going to report out. Maybe it's because she has noticed a trend of something and therefore she feels, before it gets to this stage, let me just speak about that. So that's, that's one thing. Another thing is if there are topics and, and we can maybe as a group prioritize, you can send out a list or saying, there's this, 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 and this that I could speak on, how would you prioritize it? So that maybe there are things that collectively we don't understand that could go at the top of the list as opposed to, you know, later on. But I think between those two things of you recognizing, I've noticed there's been a lot of this and this and this happening, and also in conjunction with us choosing which things we really don't know much about.
Thank you. Anything else? I know I was on this particular one, and I know I had called Ms. McClung on this, because 204 and 203 and 204, I would have no idea, I could not even answer that. Communications communicates legal concepts to administrators and other employees. I don't know what other employees that would be, who would she be speaking to? And communicates legal concepts to partners. What partners? So when I was looking at this, it was like, how do you give anybody a score on this when, what the heck does that even mean? Who is she consulting? Who is, who is she giving legal advice to when it comes to this? And then when necessary, well, when necessary communicates legal concepts to public, that's would be here on the board, which I see that because I actually see that. But the, those two, 203 and 204, and I believe this was the ones that we had brought before some time ago when we looked at the redoing this, this whole concept. I'm pretty sure that was the two that we had. There was multiple ones, but I'm sure it was those two because that right there was, I don't know who that would be.
The items before were 202, coordinate with staff attorney. And there was confusion at that point because the staff attorney was totally separate and they didn't, there was not a legal team at that point. And then I believe the other one that was discussed was, was the partners one. But at that time, the board decided to leave those as they stand. So I think this discussion shows us that maybe we need to have a little more conversation around what those expectations are in regard to those two items.
Thank you.
For particularly the next two.
And I totally agree. Some of them were just very difficult. It's like, you know, do you want to jump off the cliff or you want to fall off the cliff? There was nothing in between, you know, can I get a parachute? It's just like, you know, this or this, and both were not positive. So I really think, and this is also where the 360 would come in, because if we had the, the resource information from the 360 from other staff and people that she works with, then we would be able to use that as a resource in answering this question. So.
Thank you. Ms. Giavelli?
So, how about Mrs. Morgan?
Oh, Ms. Morgan, thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Hi. So first of all, I liked Ms. Kittens' comment that, you know, I think there's general interest in having information, but it needs to be germane to Ms. Patrica's point, to the work that we're doing so that, taking the time matters and it's relevant. With respect to the contract, I agree, you know, this, the tool, I agree that the tool that we used for Keith Martin at a time when, you know, we probably used that for 10 years, we really need to look at the alignment between the contract and the instrument we're using to evaluate the board attorney. Just as Ms. McClung and I are working on a similar revision to the board self-evaluation, I really think we need to look at what is it the board expects of the board attorney and how are we going to evaluate her? That said, I cannot understand a word that Ms. McClung is saying. I can understand everybody else very clearly.
Far away.
So I don't know quite where we are. Are we talking about sort of successes and opportunities with respect to stakeholder performance or board's performance? If somebody at the board table could tell me where we are, I would really appreciate it.
Yes, so Ms. Morgan, we're on standard two, stakeholder performance. And yes, pros or cons for any of the 201 through 205.
201s or 205s. All right, well, okay, let me just say, first of all, I do offer kudos to the board attorney for her commitment to board training, the recognition that we needed professional development, the type of professional development that we've undergone. I think it has made a huge difference in terms of how we work and how the public perceives us. On the other hand, I think we have to create some expectations with respect to legal department management and oversight, responsibilities, and this goes back to my comment about the contract and the instrument, her responsibilities for constituent education, staff education and communication. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments regarding the tools and the tool used as well as the working with the contract. I totally agree with you there. Thank you for that. Ms., is there any other?
Thank you. I think Ms. Giavelli had a question or a comment.
It's not a question, it's just a comment real quick. Because I, I too felt like this was information we really don't know. But then I, I really had to dig deep and like, so I was thinking like the Booster Club situation. While it was a, it was a pro, it still was a con because we still have Booster Club issues, even though the manual was, and the manual was there and nobody was utilizing the manual. So that has to do with making sure that the, and hopefully now with the legal department, those concepts and what the Booster Club and the Booster Manual and what they should be doing permeates down to the schools. So there's where I think there's some kind of disconnect that's not, you know, following the policies and protocols and things in place that we thought were in place that weren't working, and we know that they didn't work. And then we, now we still have an issue regarding the Booster Club. You understand what I'm saying? So where's the disconnect, you know?
Okay, so as far as the.
You know.
The Booster Club, the manual, that was already, that was.
There was one already in place.
Yeah, that was, yeah, but.
Prior.
And then there was another one that was in place. And then they went to all of the schools, they went around and they did a class on that, because I know I attended multiple classes, to make sure that they were signed off and who can actually be a part of that booster and who could not be a part of the booster. But as far as the attorney is involved in that, she creates that, she cannot force that hand once it's there in their hands.
No, but my, but, but it says administrators and other employees. So, so you've got the schools that have to understand there was a Booster Club, you know, manual, and now they're not abiding by it. So.
Again, okay, Ms. Dupree Bruno, that's not her, it's the.
So Ms. Giavelli, there was a Booster Club manual that existed. However, last spring, we completely revamped that Booster Club manual, making it a little bit more user friendly, adding some additional language, reviewing and researching what other districts were doing, even throughout the country, honestly, to try to get the best language. A committee sat there and went through that with a fine tooth comb, as well as an acknowledgement form so that anybody who's working on the Booster Club will say, yes, I've read it, I understand it, and I've signed off on it, which is completely different than what we did before. And then on top of that, Mr. LaRosa and I went to all of the schools with athletic directors, parents, et cetera, who are involved in the Booster Clubs to train them on the Booster Club manual. And they received copies of the manual. So I think that we did what we could to ensure that we provided the information, we revamped it. We do have a Booster Club issue that I am aware of, but I will tell you that's because of the manual and what we put in place. It's not a negative thing. It's actually a positive thing that allows us to be able to represent the board and protect the board in this particular instance because we did take those proactive steps last year.
Right, so now it's up to you to give us the guidance, the legal guidance back on what to do, because you've brought it to the board, but we really don't have an outcome or resolution.
Nothing for you to do yet.
Okay.
When it's time, legal will advise you. I advised in a one-on-one about the particular issue, so it's on your radar. But at this time, there's nothing that we're requesting at this point. Ms. Zupke is working on this particular issue, and so she will follow up and I will advise the board.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kittens, please.
This kind of brings a question to my mind, since this is stakeholders. What is the process and how do we disseminate legal information to the schools and all that? Is there a regular time that you speak to principals or administrators or, because I, I mean, just for example, this document, if, if there were a regular process that this is going to affect the schools, so you or one of the staff has time at the principals' or administrators' meeting, just like we were saying, you would update us on stuff that might come forward to be an issue. Is there some process like that to keep us out of trouble before we get into it?
That's something that we are working very hard on, which is that proactivity that we've been talking about. I will tell you that I have gone, I think, to two, I think, two cabinet meetings to present on a particular legal concept. There are recommended meetings that prior attorney had advised that perhaps these are meetings we want to attend. I also have contacted some of your prior attorneys to determine which meetings that they attended. At this point, I think it really depends on the superintendent. So when Dr. Bernier comes, we will get direction from him as to what meetings he wants the attorneys to attend. There are principal meetings, there are cabinet meetings, there are all kinds of meetings. But I want to wait till Dr. Bernier has an opportunity to discuss what works for him and who he wants to attend, what meetings to cover.
Because I just think that, you know, boots on the ground are the principals, administrators. And if they are armed with all the things they need to have, rather than, you know, giving it to this group and they filter it down to this group, just, you know.
I agree with you 100%.
A 10-minute legal minute at principals' meetings should be, you know, kind of, at least in my opinion, should be something that's on the books.
And I agree with you 100%. Ms. Kittens, not only to educate, but also, again, with that proactivity. Because if the attorneys are in the room where decisions are being made and discussions are being held, we view things from a completely different lens. We hear things differently. And so we can be proactive and try to respond and try to guide staff in a way that will prevent problems from happening. So I did note that was in my evaluation that things were happening and, you know, I was, I did not advise the board, but I. I did not advise the board, but I will tell you, I was not in those meetings. So if I'm not in the meetings, or our staff attorney, our legal department, any of our attorneys are not in the meetings, then we're not going to know. So I will tell you that both from HR standpoint and from procurement business operations, our two board attorneys are very involved and are watching and being very keen in terms of trying to help guide and be proactive in terms of legal, not just legal issues, but just problematic issues, public trust issues that may come up.
And I think that, I know, sometimes I've had this conversation with you as well. I just think that, and I know you just said when Dr. Bernier comes in, again, you do not work for the superintendent, you're independent from him, you are colleagues, so for them to be giving you instructions, I have an issue with that.
Not instructions. So, for example, there was one superintendent who liked the board attorney to attend cabinet meetings. There was one superintendent who didn't want board, the attorney, to attend cabinet meetings. So it really depends a little bit on the preference of what that superintendent's expectations are. We have a discussion as to what works, what will, you know, be beneficial to the district, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
If I may, just because of how much this closely coordinates with our work, so there's so many legal issues, not just in the schools, but really across the entire organization. There's so many. Part of the challenge of why we're so excited about an EOLA and getting our process documents and just that transparency of process is also that you could, we have to prioritize what our legal issues are and what are just our business issues that are creating eventual legal issues. So there's definitely no doubt, we do not in any way try to direct, certainly, I've never tried to direct the board attorney, general counsel's work in any way, but it's really collaboratively as one organization, how do we harden ourselves against obvious liability? Because you can go through a single day and have a whole slew of issues that could potentially be legal issues. So now which are the most glaring, which are the most obvious, which are the procedural gaffes that are self-inflicted wounds? That's an ongoing daily occurrence as we analyze the organization.
No, and I understand that, but I feel that too, if the attorney is asked to be in every single meeting that we have, there are meetings nonstop here, nonstop, in this building. So if they're asked to be in all of these meetings, how is anything going to get done? It's just, it's impossible.
I agree with you, Ms. Jordan, that it's something that we have to be very judicious in deciding which meetings to attend, and that's something that we as a legal team will discuss as things come up. If I'm at a meeting, that's going to be a high-up meeting and with high-up issues, high-end issues. If Shayna's going to be at a meeting, it's usually things that deal with business operations or deals with, not business operations, but operations and business services. She's going to start attending the Capitol meetings. She needs to be there. This is where things are being discussed with regards to operations, and she can catch things. Mr. Hudek goes to HR, the ORT meetings and some of those things, that's his responsibility. I don't go to those things, that's not within my purview, but when we come together on Fridays as a legal team, then we discuss any particular issue that needs to be discussed, and we counsel with each other, and I provide guidance, and we provide each other guidance on how to move forward with whatever issues that there are.
And that includes Ms. Schroed as well?
Yes, Ms. Schroed is part of that team, and all of our paralegals and our staff also goes to that, to that meeting.
Where is she? We have the entire, every member of the legal team sitting in this room.
These are my direct reports that are here.
It gives the appearance of it not being a team.
Well, we meet every Friday as a team, and I, you know, these are just my direct reports that are here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Morgan?
I have no comment, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to standard three, legal performance. The board attorney practices law in support of the school board and the school district, and there are four items there, so we'll open the conversation for any strengths and opportunities in this area.
So Ms. Morgan, we're on standard three, legal performances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Strengths or opportunities?
Thank you.
Just in case you did not hear her. So I guess I'm going to start with you, Ms. Morgan. Did you have any comments for standard three?
Yes, so first of all, in terms of what I thought were successes by the board attorney, she recognized the need to hire a legal team, and she has put one together. I think somebody else commented in their evaluation of her, and I really appreciated the comment, changing the zero tolerance expulsion philosophy is definitely in the right direction. Someone complimented her for that, and I did not pick that up, but I did appreciate that comment. With respect to legal performance in terms of opportunities for improvement, I think the really big issue gets back to something we were talking about earlier, which is what do we expect? Almost everybody talked about opinion timeliness, clarity, proactivity instead of reactivity. So I think that there is, there is a disconnect between what we expect and what is taking place, and I think it's our responsibility to clarify it, and again, that's something that then would be embedded in the, in a revived performance evaluation instrument. Those are my comments, and I'll listen to the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Anyone else, please?
Yeah, well, this is a plus. I have noted that Attorney Dupree Bruno really works hard on responding to legal issues and keeping us informed in a timely manner that she's working on things. The conclusions may not be as quickly as we expect, but I think the work is being done, and I also know that she consults a lot with colleagues around the state and then provides advice on behalf of the board whenever it comes to anything that may be litigation or any other serious legal matters. So I think she performs well legally.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Well, one of the things that I had put down that was an issue for me was the Veterans Park Academy and the Lambs and naming the school and all of that and making those decisions, and I know that, I put it down as an issue, but I know that the attorney was new at the time, and I believe it was the superintendent that was, you know, pushing certain things through. But I put it down because that's the type of thing that we need to have that legal forethought on. We have policies and processes in place, and if they are just overlooked by the superintendent or whomever, then that needs to be brought to light that there is a legal issue here. We have a policy that says we do this, this, and this, and this way, and that policy has been overlooked, and that's why I put it in there, that oversight.
Thank you for that comment, and we, I appreciate that, Ms. Gittens, because those are the kind of things that we are looking for in the new legal team. In addition, we did implement that 9.10 with the last naming of school that we just had, and Mr. Hudek was there in all of those committee meetings, so we are putting that in place and making sure that we adhere to policies.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. Ms. Patrica?
So I think this is going to illustrate part of the issue that you have Attorney Dupree Bruno and working for seven different people. The change in policy for, not policy, change in practice for zero tolerance, what was your role in that, please?
So my role was discussions with Attorney Schroed with regard to some of the concerns that were there with expulsions. Student discipline has always been a concern that has been there from Derek hearings to the expulsions. Then there was a meeting with Dr. Savage, Ms. Schroed, I think Dr. Carlin was also in that meeting, and we had additional discussions with regards to that policy, which led to one-on-one conversations with board members that I partook of in explaining the change in philosophy.
So I guess that's, and that is an area of criticism for me, because we as a board had to work out sort of an agreement at the table during an expulsion. It was a simple change in language. I think, I think the change in language was something along the lines of, I mean, two, literally, two words were added to the order. And so from my perspective, that was a criticism, because I believe that that should have been worked out with staff before it came to the board, instead of the board having to fight it out and figure it out. We're not the legal wordsmiths, and so while it's a compliment to you from some of my colleagues, for me, that was a concern. So I just, I just throw that out there as a way of illustrating I understand how difficult it is for you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica, I appreciate that comment. It is very difficult to work with seven individuals who are not usually on the same page, so it is a challenging situation. With that comment, recognize that we had an expulsion hearing prior to where I made a recommendation that differed from the superintendent and the staff attorney, and that was problematic. So this particular circumstance that you're referring to, I had no involvement in it, because I purposefully had no involvement in it because of what happened at the prior expulsion hearing. It's very difficult to provide legal advice to the board, and then if my advice is not along the lines of the superintendent or the staff attorney, then I get reprimanded or people get upset that I gave an advice that's not similar. So that's, that's the quandary that I'm in, that I try to navigate all the time.
But that, but that's the exact circumstance I'm talking about, the one where your advice was different from the superintendent's. That required a two-word change to the order, and had, had you guys worked that out before it came to us, then there would have been no difficulty at the table, there would have been no concern about understanding where you were coming from, where the superintendent, I mean, literally, it was a two-word change.
And I appreciate...
And that's the one I'm talking about.
I appreciate that, Ms. Patrica. Also recall that there were email exchanges that indicated that I had this particular concern that was sent to staff, including the staff attorney as well as other individuals to discuss this particular issue, and unfortunately, it just was not resolved prior to the meeting. But there was a reach out to staff to try to get this resolved. I actually asked for a meeting prior to, which did not occur either.
Ms. Jevonelli?
So thank you for that, because that's information that we need to know, because you need to be able to do your job. So I think it's vital that you have the ability and afforded that with every opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
And that was my comment. I would not feel comfortable with you as our attorney not saying something because you're figuring it'll fall on deaf ears. I think it is your responsibility, whether we hear it or we don't hear it, we still have the final say-so on the vote, but I think your responsibility is to say it, whether or not anyone wants to hear it. If it's a legal issue, it needs to be out, and it needs to be said, and it needs to be as a part of the meeting, in my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else?
No other comments on this area. We'll move on to standard four, which is professionalism. The board attorney conducts legal and administrative work competently and ethically, and there are four items within this standard, so we'll open it up for discussion, so any strengths or opportunities in this area.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Why do I have to...
Well, because I don't want to forget you, and you're that important to us.
I'm here? I'm in the back row? Okay. So professionalism. Yeah, I do think that the board attorney continues to climb a steep learning curve in terms of her knowledge about public education law and the business of public education, but she, she continues to work on it, so I think that that gets a kudo. I do think that she has done a good job of speaking to the board and the district about poorly formed communications and the potential violation of legal and ethical norms. She has a number of times come out to us and said, we shouldn't be doing this, and I think we need that caution, and she's been pretty rigorous about staying on top of this for it. With respect to opportunities, you know, I think pretty much everybody said that, you know, we need better team and time management, there's micromanagement, there's a lack of respect of lanes, the way of work, work product, work relationships need improvement. I think the legal department has internal problems that, in terms of how they work and how it's being managed, that undermines confidence in the work that's being done, and that concerns me. The other thing I don't think, I think that needs considerable work is the budget. I don't think, right now, we have a clear understanding of what the district budget is, what we get with that budget, both in terms of internal and external expenditures. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Okay, let's see.
Other board members, comments?
I think I had commented as well on the legal cases and the outsources in-house, and I know that Ms. Vaughn has brought that up a couple times as well, and getting a clear picture of the total cost, that we, you know, we really should be able to see that. And I know that even with our, the new process, that will help us out, because that was cost that, I'm sure we were not thinking that we were going to spend that 83-plus, but I really do think that that's something that we should get a, at least a glance at what that is. We really need to know what that is. And, let's see. We definitely need to know, as soon as you are conflicted out, I think that's something we need to know, like immediately, that you are conflicted out, so we know how that's going to take place with, you know, Mr. Quick or whoever that, whoever that is. Well, it's him for us right now, but we need to know that, I think. Is there any other comments? Ms. Vaughn?
No.
No comments. Ms. Gittens?
I believe Ms. Fisher has her hand raised.
Fisher? Yes. So 402 maintains current legal knowledge through continuing education, and kind of to piggyback on Ms. Morgan, I think that Attorney Dupree Bruno has really done a yeoman's job in working on the education law piece, and she seems to attend every opportunity for continuing education that she can. I think that with the legal team being in place now, some of the other issues and opportunities for improvement will happen. I'm interested in the budget too, to know, like, what are we spending in-house and what are we spending contracting out and for our conflict attorney? And then I noticed that Attorney Dupree Bruno, whenever we have something come before us, she's part of the review team herself, even if other attorneys are, so I don't know if that's going to change. I mean, like, it looks like you have a final review of every contract, okay? I don't, I don't know if that can be shared with your colleagues, because that's a lot, and I know it takes a lot of time, and I think it definitely inhibits the efficiency and effectiveness a little bit, so I...
So thank you, Ms. Fisher, for that comment. I will say that we are continuing to tweak and make our process better and more efficient with regards to contracts, now that our Assistant Board Attorney Zupke is handling that and doing, I would say, a very good job in really delving into those contracts. She started in January 28th, I believe it was, she's already reviewed 86 contracts. So it's a lot. However, before it gets to the superintendent or before... However, before it gets to the superintendent or before it gets to the Board, I have to sign off on it, so I do a glance, and I feel a little bit better now, much better, actually, that I know that I have an attorney that's completely dedicated to really delving into those contracts and speaking with staff and asking the right questions, so it's going to get better in terms of process.
So then are you saying that even when somebody else on the legal team reviews the contract, you have to do it?
I don't have to review them in that same depth.
Okay.
I don't have to talk to staff and get all those preliminary questions answered. I do review it, I do more of a cursory review, but Ms. Zupki is responsible for the more in-depth contract reviews.
And thank you for continuously improving the quality of your service.
And I think that, she was doing that when James was here as well, looking at, you were the final eyes on the contracts.
At one point, I was doing more the in-depth, and then, so we tried different models, but I think that this model is working so far.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I'm trying to find the words to do this tactfully. The situation with public comment and all that that entailed, and then I think the hurtful thing for you was having to, after you heard from other associates around the state, then coming back and making a change was what made it difficult. I know that you came up with all of that list and everything in-house, with staff in-house, as to how we would proceed and all of that. So my suggestion is in those types of situations to maybe look broader before making those decisions and getting more input, because it, you know, having, for us, basically having to come back and say, no, we're not going to do this now because we've realized this. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. So I have, I did read some comments with regards to concerns regarding public comment. One thing that I would ask the Board to reflect and remember, this was during a time period when we kind of tightened up the public comment, this was during the time period that tempers were flaring, people were very upset, there was a lot of requests from board members to enforce the rules and to control the, the DA has control the audience, there was a lot of request. This was during the time period that there were some board members that were getting threatening messages on social media. There was one board member, I remember very specifically, who was very upset because that board member's family member called them to tell them that, you know, on social media, they're saying, hey, we know where she lives, we know how to get her. This was a time period when, I believe, the superintendent was actually having people drive by his house. This was a time period when my husband's picture and my 19-year-old daughter's picture was posted on Facebook, and we were, with notations that we were members of the occult. So this, and we had other board members who were constantly being attacked and threatened. So what occurred with that is continuous work with our Executive Director of Safety and Security, who's responsible for our safety. We had meetings to try to figure out how to work with the decorum with the public and how to keep our staff safe, how to keep board members safe. Controlling a crowd is one of those elements, and there was concern because of the level of the unhappiness with certain, you know, the mass discussion and those kind of things, that we could, you know, the crowd could not be controlled, and we would be in danger. So these were safety issues that came up, and it's unfortunate that the public took it in a particular way, but we had to do what we needed to do to make sure that board members were safe, that staff was safe, that the public was safe. So that's how come Safety and Security, along with me, along with the superintendent and other members, discussed the best way to control this. As things have relaxed and the danger is not here as it was in the past, and the safety issue is not as prevalent, although if you ask Mr. Nealon, I'm sure he will tell you that there's still safety concerns, but as things have calmed down a little bit, the rules are relaxed. Ms. Jordan doesn't say what she, the full things that she used to say in her script, but I continue to say them, because it's important for the public to understand that this is, and this could be a problem, so that's why we're doing it. In terms of the, whether or not you can say a board member's name or not say a board member's name, our policy dictates that there are no personal attacks. I didn't make that up, that's in our policy, and there's actually case law that supports that policy in terms of no personal attacks. And what has happened is throughout the districts, there are many districts, including one of my friend's district in Brevard, that is actually going through litigation at this time with regards to the use of some of our policies and personal attacks. The reason that I'm cautious and I felt uncomfortable, which is what I shared with the Board, is because I don't want to be put in a position where I'm controlling viewpoint. And that's why, if somebody's coming here to congratulate Ms. Jordan for whatever she has done, and then somebody comes in and says, Ms. Jordan, you know, you're the worst, I have to allow both comments to happen, or I'm controlling viewpoint. So that's why, given our constituency and our position, that's why I have been more cautious and erd on the side of caution, not the law, because I believe the law is still the law, and it still talks about the personal attacks. I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where we tumble into another legal area of the First Amendment and controlling viewpoint. So that's why that happened the way it is.
Well, and I totally understand that, and, you know, for the record, I experienced all of the above that you said. My comment for the record, like I said, was that I experienced all of the above that you mentioned that everyone else went through, and there were no protocols or anything put in place when I went through the same thing alone. Just putting that on the record. But I don't know, I guess when a group is already angry, it's not so much what we tell them, maybe it's how we tell them, and maybe there should have been, and I'm not pointing a finger, but I'm just saying, they got angrier because of, you know, now you're adding rules. So maybe it's something we can look at and determine how would it be more palatable and not create more friction in how we present it to the public. And again, the communication.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. When we go through the NEOLAs process, there is actually a portion of the bylaws and some policies that is specifically directed towards public comment. And I will tell you that NEOLA right now is very attuned to the legal developments in this particular area, so I think that will definitely address some of your concerns, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments in standard four? So those conclude the four standards. So you have the evaluation results, based upon those results, what next steps would the Board like to take in terms of the evaluation, in terms of the contract, keeping in mind that April 15th is the date that action needs to be taken by one way or the other.
Ladies, I will say that, in listening to Ms. Morgan and talking about the tools, that's something we definitely, we definitely need to make sure that we have better tools that go along with the A contract, whatever that contract is, in order to have more clarity even how we are, because it seems like a lot of the stuff, when you're reading it, does it really have to do with legal matters of what Mr. Dupree Bruno is doing, or is it our personalities coming out or our personal opinions? So I think that we definitely need to work on something like that, as far as I'm concerned. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
I just feel, like we had said before, some of the way it's written, the verbiage, it's just too, it needs to have something like in-between, if there was going to be, you know, level, highly effective, effective, maybe a fifth one or something somewhere in-between, because going from one to the next, it's like night and day. I just think we need to look at the instrument itself and look at, and perhaps from the impression of the attorney or the superintendent looking at their evaluations and saying what comments they might think would make it better, since they are the recipient of our evaluations.
So I believe that one thing that we need to do is to add to the list, that we would do a review of the whole evaluation, and rather than do that now...
It's already on there, though. I mean, it is on, you have it on our list of items to do.
We actually did it, and the Board chose not to make any changes, so we would need to go back and do another one, so we'll just put it back on the list and bring that forward again. And I've had a text from Ms. Lancaster that they need to take a break, they've discovered an issue and need to...
For recording?
Take a break, yes. So unfortunately, that's going to put us at a halt for a few minutes here.
Okay. We'll take a, what, how long do they need a break for?
She didn't say. 10, 10 minutes.
10-minute break to make sure that we are recording.
This is, yeah, for the closed caption.
Yes, for closed caption.
We need to take a 10-minute break so that they can make sure that we are legally in compliance with the closed caption requirement.